Everyone, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Fisher? Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Brecken?
Here.
Claude?
Here.
Hibma?
Here.
Jertie?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, if you come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Okay, hearing nothing from the chambers. Anybody on the phone bridge, please?
Oh, yeah, phone bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Agent logged off.
Okay, we have a proclamation, right, and also a presentation. So we'll start with proclamation. City of Crookston, Mayor proclamation to declare May 2025 Community Action Month. Whereas community action has put a human face on poverty for six years by advocating for limited income citizens without a voice. So they, so that they may enter the middle class and reach for the American dream, replacing their despair with opportunity. And whereas community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling enhancing, enhancing stronger communities, which in turn promotes self-sufficiency, ensuring that all Americans are able to live in dignity. And whereas Tri Valley Opportunity Council has been headquartered in Crookston since 1965 and has enhanced the lives of thousands of people throughout Minnesota by providing essential life-changing services and opportunities such as affordable housing, economic development, early childhood services, energy assistance, and services for seniors. And whereas Tri Valley Opportunity Council serves over 2,000 families and over 4,500 individuals, including over 2,000 children and seniors in 2024, by utilizing over 700 volunteers. And whereas Tri Valley Opportunity Council will continue to implement innovative and cost-effective programs to improve the lives and the living conditions of the impoverished, continue to provide sport, support, and opportunities for all citizens in need of assistance. Now therefore, I Dale Stanbrook, Mayor of Crookston, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of Tri Valley Opportunity Council and all of Minnesota community action agencies. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, to hereby proclaim May 2025 as Community Action Month. All right, Jason?
Sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, well shot.
One last one?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, we have a presentation regarding 102 North Broadway reuse analysts from Three Rivers Housing.
So how is our connection, Ian?
Um, we are currently at the issues right now. We have audio and YouTube and we'll be sure to try to do that.
Okay. Um, would Chris be able to sign on for Zoom for the audio portion of it? So then we, there we go. We'll just, and then once you get that running, just let us know. Thank you.
Okay. My papers here. Okay, the 102 North Broadway reuse analyst, and I guess, Chris, you want to do the lead on this?
Sure, yeah. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. It'd be a lot easier. Uh, but I, I guess the, the purpose of the presentation is just to really summarize the 102 North Broadway site analysis that Three Rivers helped to prepare for the community. And so I just want to kind of run through our, the options and what we found about each of them and our kind of overall recommendation for, for what best to do with the site and, and how that might look in, kind of projecting out into the future. So in the fall, we, we brought together with help of, of various community leaders, a, a group of community stakeholders to provide input about, about the site and, and the possibilities of reuse and the, and the needs within the community. And there, there were basically three, three items that rose to the top of the, the list of, of potential uses for the site. Three things that, that were, were much needed. One is a childcare facility of some kind. Another was a, kind of combining two things that are related, but either a retail storefront or a restaurant. And then finally, housing and the, the housing, you know, set of subgroups or subuses that people talked about were either market rate housing, affordable housings, or affordable family housing, or housing designed for seniors that could be either market rate or affordable. Uh, so we, we took those top things and, and looked at those. And in addition, there were some sort of other uses that were maybe less, less likely to be to occupy the entire site, but maybe would be like a auxiliary use of the, of the site. And those included an amphitheater, a pedestrian mall, and a greenway. And those could either happen on the site itself or adjacent to the site, whether along the Highway 2 or the adjoining streets. The fact that, that most of these don't, don't bring any revenue would make them challenging to, to pay for. But they could certainly be a, a component of any other use that, that happened on the site. Similar to the, the study that I think JLD did for the other side of the street to the south a few years ago, there was a, a proposal for a, a building or a concept of a building that also included an outdoor amphitheater space or outdoor, uh, outdoor event space. So looking at these one by one, the child fair facility, the, the concept that we thought would make the most sense in this location would be a, what's sometimes called a pod concept or a, a shared use project where multiple providers can share a, a building, but they each have their own sort of condominium almost. And that each of those small spaces within the building can be licensed as a, an in-home childcare as long as it has its own address and certain other requirements. And so those are a good way to kind of bring efficiency to small operators that may already exist in the community and ways for them to expand their operations and get out of their own houses if they'd like to. Uh, the difficulty with that concept in general, though, is that it's, it's challenging for businesses of those sizes to, to afford rents that could pay for the building that, that would, they would occupy. Where this is done in some other places, there often is pretty significant subsidy that comes in from the, the, either the Economic Development Authority or, or some other public entity that helps make the project work. We think it'd be really difficult for someone to, for example, create a, uh, build a building specifically for this use and have it make economic sense. I don't think that the, the rents that the daycare providers could pay would still, would support the cost of building that building. That said, something like this could be incorporated into other uses, so like the ground floor, for example, if something had maybe housing above or some other thing could have a, a component of childcare on the site.
Could I, Chris, could I ask you a question regarding that?
Sure.
Um, would this be, people aren't familiar, this is the old Tri Valley site, or anyway, um,
Yep.
Would there, would there be, if you had a pod concept with daycare or childcare, would there be issues with safety as far as the traffic? And also, is there enough room for a green space or playground?
Yeah, the, the, the site is actually pretty big, if you include the whole parking lot area. So if, if you looked at all of that together, there, there's quite a bit of room. And you could certain, depending on how much parking you wanted to provide on the site itself, there's certainly plenty of room. It would be a much more kind of urban concept probably than is, than other, other childcare options in town. And so there would probably be a fence around the, the playground area and the outdoor space, but there, there's enough room, at least by, by licensing standards, which is all I really know about. You might want to have your kids have more space than that, but the state seems to think there's enough room.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so looking at the next option, uh, which turns out is, is somewhat similar, that's a retail spot or a restaurant. So that, again, the, the spot, the, the, the site could accommodate a retailer or a restaurant, and there's, there's enough room for parking in a, in a, in a building to have a storefront. And that would be consistent with everything else that's downtown. It'd be kind of like the best, best fit in some ways. But as with all new buildings, it would be expensive to, to build a new building. And the, the likelihood that a, a new restaurant or a new store would be able to afford the rent that would have to be paid in order to, to support the cost of new construction seems pretty unlikely. That's particularly a problem, given that there's also a, a fair number of vacant storefronts downtown. So this new building would have to compete with other existing buildings for tenants, and it, it's hard to imagine somebody, you know, wanting to pay a, a premium for this location, even if it were a new, a new building, when across the street or, or down the block, there are other, other sites that could, that could be. Um, but again, just like the childcare facility, uh, this could be incorporated into other concepts. So part of the site or the first floor of the site could conceivably have a, a restaurant or retail storefront incorporated into the building. That, that mix of uses, though, um, that can be challenging. It, it makes a project a lot more complicated for the developer and makes it a lot less appealing. Many developers are, are a little scared off by mixed-use projects because they haven't always been as, as successful as people would like in bigger cities where sometimes they're, uh, the planning department has basically demanded that buildings be mixed-use. Uh, sometimes it's very hard to, to fill those, those storefronts down on the bottom floor. So the, the last option, um, and it's really kind of a, a series of options, is housing of some kind. And just like with anything else, the, the, a new building is very expensive. It sort of doesn't really matter what you, what you're building. It's just the, the cost of construction and the, um, the increased standards to which we build these days are just much more expensive than an existing building.
Are we talking, are we talking new construction of a building or are we talking the current building?
Yeah, I guess in, in, I should, should step back and say that in, in all cases, I think our assumption is that it's a new building, that the, that the existing building is functionally obsolete. It is, uh, it's a sort of split level building, which makes accessibility really difficult. And so if it were to, if it's to change uses, it'll have to come up to code, and that will just be exceptionally expensive as a, as a retrofit for that building. So we're assuming that that building comes down and that something else replaces it.
Okay, thank you.
And so I think the, the, based on what the, the market rents in, in Crookston are now, it seems unlikely that, just like basically everywhere else, I mean, Crookston's not unique in this respect, market rate rents are really difficult to, uh, have a really hard time supporting new construction outside of very large projects or very high-end kind of luxury projects that get built sometimes in, in big cities. That said, unlike most of the other options listed here, subsidy is available from the state and federal government to help support some of these, uh, some of these options as long as they're affordable. So for affordable rental, there may be a path forward where there is subsidy that, uh, it does not come from local sources, but, but helps to build the project. So in an affordable project, conceivably, um, the, the main source of subsidy is the low-income housing tax credit. That's the same source that was used most recently in Crookston to build Agassi Townhomes. So that the, as you may remember, if you're around for the, those application rounds for Agassi Townhomes, the competition for credits is intense. And the, the, uh, there are a lot of projects that are applying for these credits, but there aren't that many to go around. And as projects become more expensive, the competition actually increases because there are a, a finite number of credits. And as projects become more expensive, we can fund fewer projects. In, in years past, uh, small communities like Crookston have been at a, at a distinct disadvantage in the competition for credits because of the scoring that the state sets up. I think sometimes they, they come up with ideas about how to prioritize projects in, in St. Paul that don't necessarily work super well in, uh, in greater Minnesota. You may remember when Agassi was applying, uh, there were points available for your walk score for, for a project. And the Agassi site walk score didn't really capture any of the surrounding amenities that were near that site because that walk score is populated by people's reviews on Google, I think. And if, if people haven't submitted a review about Casey's on the corner, then it doesn't show up as a possible amenity nearby your project. So Crookston didn't score well. We tried our best then the next year to, to include as many of those things as we could into the walk score and had to sort of argue our way into, into enough points to get the project funded. However, that said, this does seem to be getting a little bit better as years pass as we continually gripe about the scoring in greater Minnesota. So nowadays, one of the changes that has been made that I think is really beneficial potentially to this site is that there is a, a set aside that used to be a certain amount of credits that are, are reserved for a rural development finance project. But they've expanded that recently to be either a rural development project or a project with 24 units or fewer, um, so a smaller project in greater Minnesota. So if you, uh, if you apply in a year when there is no other rural development project applying for tax credits, which is more and more the case, um, because rural development projects are, are difficult to, to, to build, to work with all the way around, um, then your project is competing just against other small projects. And with a, uh, you, you can achieve, or sorry, you can receive award, an award of credits with a much lower score than you would otherwise need to. It enables those small projects to get, get forward, funded and move forward. And so moving on to the next slide, if you're following along, the affordable rental housing, um, to, to receive the order credits, the key ultimately is local contributions of any kind that can score points. Most of the points are kind of baked into the, the project concept that you use and the, um, the place on the map. This, the state publishes a map that is, that awards, uh, points based on a variety of geographic factors, and there's really nothing you can do about that. You just have the points you have for your location. But the thing that you can control are your local contributions, and those things include a commitment of project-based rental assistance that you can receive locally. So if, for example, the, um, if, if, I, I think it's, was called CETA, I don't know if it still is, but if the, the HRA, uh, were to set aside some, um, project-based vouchers, or sorry, excuse me, set aside some, um, housing choice vouchers and dedicate them just to this project, for example, a potential project, that would score points in the competition. The other thing would be to provide supportive services for, um, some supportive housing units within the project. Doesn't need to be a whole lot, maybe five, um, in total would be enough to, to score points there. Uh, another way that is, is common is tax increment financing. But with the change, uh, about a year or two ago at the legislature, the new 4D tax rate for affordable housing has become so low now that, uh, they don't, those projects don't generate very much TIF. And so TIF doesn't necessarily have much value, if any, anymore. So it's, it's a much less effective, um, way to support the project. The other way that, that funds can be raised are local grants or local fundraising. And then also anything that the developer themselves can, can scare up in grants or, um, other sources that they can bring into the project. On this particular site, I think one of the, a, a few things that, that could be done that could help a project, uh, score pretty well would be, one, if the site itself was contributed to the, to the project or to the developer. So the site contribution is considered a, uh, an other contribution as far as the, the state is concerned. So it's not like giving money. It's more like an in-kind contribution. So it's, you're not, uh, if, if the city, for example, were to, to transfer that to a developer for no cost, the developer could claim the value of that contribution, um, towards their application points. The other one that is, is significant is the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines has a separate funding, source, I guess, um, the Affordable Housing Program or AHP. And they give out grants of up to $3 million for projects. And if, if a 24-ish unit project were to have a $3 million grant in hand from the Federal Home Loan Bank at the time that it applied for tax credits, it would receive the, the most available point of leverage that, that you could get. Um, and that would be a huge leg up for the project. Plus, it's, it's, in theory, difficult for the state to give up a $3 million grant that has already been committed. They're, they're going to want to find a way to fund a project like that to, to keep that money coming to Minnesota. Uh, as the Federal Home Loan Bank, uh, funds our competition among, yeah, roughly a quarter of the country. They have a, a, a big footprint where they give out their money. And, and their, their scoring, they have their own scoring, is similar to the housing tax credit scoring. But the, there aren't that many ways for one project to distinguish itself from another. But one of the key ways to do that is with the contribution of a publicly owned vacant building. Um, and so if the, the 102 North Broadway, Broadway, the, the Tri Valley, old Tri Valley building was, was still standing and vacant and donated to the development, that would score extra points that would probably, it's hard to say exactly, but probably, enable the project to receive this grant of $3 million. Because you can, you can somewhat predict from year to year, uh, what the, what the scoring would be. And we've, we've done that, we talked about it later. The, the potential drawbacks to all of this, though, despite the fact that the affordable housing has, uh, all these potential funding sources, it can take years to, to pull all this funding together. Uh, these funding sources only have one application generally each year. If you miss the timing of that, you have to wait for a whole nother year. If you don't quite make the cut in the first year that you apply, you might have to wait a whole year and apply again. It's not uncommon to have to apply in multiple years. It, you know, a successful path likely requires that the city would have to donate the site rather than, rather than sell it. Likely, you would have to maintain the existing building as a vacant building in order to receive the Federal Home Loan Bank funding. If you, if you need to get that building down for any reason, or if you, uh, if, for example, you wanted to, I know that there was mention of leasing the site to Minda as they reconstruct the highway. If, uh, i- if they need an empty site with no building on it, or if, if that, you know, the, the income from that rental is more important than the, the possibility of, of this Federal Home Loan Bank, uh, funding. And it, it's hard to say what, how to, how to make that decision. Then if you, if you take the building down, it's, it's probably not, uh, likely that the Federal Home Loan Bank funds will come in. The other issue is that the, uh, in order to score enough points for a, a, a tax credit award, the project likely needs to include some supportive housing, um, which means that there would be housing for, uh, families experiencing homelessness or, uh, people with disabilities. people with disabilities who would have services on site. So it's not just a completely open to anybody who who is already living in the in the community, although there are likely people in both of those categories who are already living in the community. So it would just provide housing for for those families. The other issue is that while it is a possibility, senior housing does not likely score as well in the tax credit competition. It wasn't until recently that senior was even an option in tax credit scoring in Minnesota. They have added a senior kind of category, but it it would is not likely to score as well as a as a family or or, you know, larger unit project would score. And then lastly, mixing of uses, so if you were to include a daycare or another use, it's is particularly difficult in a tax credit project. If if you have an investor who's looking at your project and you are telling them that you want to mix uses, that gets to be very complicated. The the tax credit rules are complex and they run for, you know, the the rules run for 15 years for the investor and there are plenty of other projects that they could put their money in instead. So they they tend not to be very interested in in mixed-use projects. So it makes that really tough. If you can find something that doesn't need any revenue or doesn't isn't isn't projected to add any income to the project, then you can make it work. So, for example, if you have a a small commercial space that you just on paper, say, is not going to earn any money, we're just not expecting any income from this commercial space. That is as a is a way that you can make that work. And so that any any rental income that you receive from that commercial space is just sort of a bonus income to the project. But if 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 that seemed like a a way to go, the the next steps that we would recommend in in pursuing a project like that would be to to particularly because it's now city-owned parcel, would be to to initiate a a kind of broad public process for refining the development con- concept a bit and trying to figure out what what the community wants. What are the elements that are are kind of non-negotiable? What are the dreams? The hopes that could be incorporated into that that project, because there's probably more than enough room to do a 24-unit project with it with parking onsite. You could then develop a request for qualifications or a full request proposal from a developer. There are three that I know of that are working in the area that might be interested. MMCDC, Tri-Valley and Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. Any one of those might be quite interested for for a particularly for a nonprofit developer of tax credit pricing, tax credit projects. Often, the hardest part of of putting these projects together is finding a good site, finding a a place that kind of has a has a reasonable chance of of scoring enough points to get a project put together. And I think you I think you have one of those in this site. I think it's an appealing location in a downtown that could score well. And then once you, once you have received some of these proposals, and there might be many others that that could respond, you could either invite them or just publish it broadly. It's up up to you. Once you received a proposal, you could then select a developer to work with and move through the process of working on on what exactly it is that they're going to propose and refining it, making sure that it it meets meets with what the the city would like to see. In the meantime, you'd have to maintain the existing building. It would be vacant, but just keep it up for the sake of Federal Home Loan Bank funding. Doesn't need to be in good shape. In fact, the worse in some respects, the better. It just needs to be a blighted vacant building. And then you could lease at least the parking area to Mindot for the reconstruction project. And hopefully, that's enough space. I don't I don't know. I don't know what they need. And you could meanwhile, think about other kind of adjacent improvements that that some of which were discussed in our feedback meetings or stakeholder meeting. There was a lot of talk about improving the connections from the the sort of top of the hill downtown, down to the river, to the library, around to the movie theater and the Historical Society and the Cathedral, and then eventually down to Central Park. And there was even a thought of of perhaps North Ash Street could be vacated and become more of a pedestrian plaza or a part of a of a way to to move down the hill to the to these other amenities and to the river. And so, again, this is a a years-long process of trying to imagine what this might might look like. If if there were a community planning process that began soon in, say, June, after gathering some input from the community, you might release an RFP in August and select a developer in September and the fall. That developer could then begin working immediately on some preliminary design work to get some get get enough of a design together to make an application for funding. The Federal Home Loan Bank application is due in May. And the tax credit application is due then in July. You then have to just wait around until the those two entities make their decisions. Federal Home Loan Bank and and the state make their awards both in December. And so without the Federal Home Loan Bank funding awarded and and secured, that first round in the in the tax credit awards might not go well, because you won't have the benefit of having that $3 million already awarded. You can say that you're applying for it, but you don't have it secured yet. So if that is not enough points to secure a a award of tax credits, the second round would have to wait another year, go in in July of '27. And the award then hopefully would be in good shape with a $3 million of leverage in December of 2027. So then the the project would then have to do to full design work, a whole bunch of additional work for due diligence for all the funders, most notably Minnesota Housing, which can take a while. And so it might miss starting construction in the fall of '28 and instead start in the spring of 2029 and take about a year or so to build. And then at least a few months to lease up. So it might fully be leased in 2030, which is about five years from now. Realistically, if they were to to go down this route, market-rate projects, on the other hand, could probably, you know, start as quickly as they could finish designs and 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 get a building permit. It takes much less time to to get pulled together. So those are our thoughts, our feedback. It it seems to us that a affordable project.
Well, I I feel we're probably behind the eight ball already because maintaining the existing building would be out to $3 million because we wouldn't get the federal housing loan. I mean, we have a kind of a bad corner there on Broadway and Robert as far as pedestrians. I don't know what our other options would be. I think the consensus is really is that I think as a city, we need to eliminate that building.
Can I ask, is this building owned by the city or is this owned by Tri-Valley?
We currently own it.
The city owns it?
The city owns it.
Did we take ownership?
About three months ago, for about four, about four months ago.
Who paid for this study?
Pardon?
Who paid for the study? Who paid for the study?
Tri-Valley.
Is he still there?
Yeah, he just got back.
Hi, sorry, sorry. I don't know if you can see or hear me.
Yes, we hear you, Chris.
Okay, great, okay, great.
I don't know if you heard my question, Chris, you know, I think as far as the federal housing loan, we would probably be behind the eight ball already, just because as a as a city or a community, we feel that that building has got to come down because of a pedestrian safety issue on that corner. You know, even though we have a truck bypass, we still have issues with large trucks coming down because it is US Highway 2.
Sure, sure.
Has there been any conversation with Mindot about that? And since we'll be doing a corridor project here anyways?
I was, this was prepared separate with, we had one meeting with Jason and Tri-Valley and Chris. I don't know the extent of crap Chris can insert, any town communications they've had with Mindot with the project, but they are fully aware of the '27 road project going through.
I was more referring to the idea that if this is a safety issue, is this not something that we just incorporate into the current corridor project and making that corner maybe a little bit more accessible or even moving that corner, that corner back if that building won't be there?
If the building is there?
Is not there.
Yeah, I think all of the design of the intersections, they call them bump outs.
Right.
But.
But I think the reality of that is it's not ideal.
Right.
And if that's something that we're going to tear that building down regardless, is that not something that we probably want to be part of that conversation now versus later? If it is something where we could have that building down and we could maybe move not only that bump out back further because it is such a significant issue?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, I know, just talking. With the administrator, previous administrators, I mean, I would like to see that building down before they start construction in '27.
Right. So I'm assuming regardless of any of the options that we have here, first and foremost, the building would be down in order to do anything, correct?
But if we take, I was just, but if we take the building down and try to do development there because the building is down, we're not going to be able to apply for the federal housing program. Because that includes existing buildings already there.
Right, but that's only if we were to do housing, right?
Yeah.
That is my understanding is that the bill, the building would need to be donated for the housing. Is that correct, Chris?
That's right, yeah, the Federal Home Loan Bank funding is only for housing.
And you would be retrofitting that building then if that's the case? Or would you still be tearing the building down?
No, they retrofit the building for the needs.
Okay.
But the other thing is, is we've been, you know, kind of burned over the years. We'd almost want an engineer report on the on the structure of the building and if the building was going to stay.
At one point, didn't we have interest in the VFW corner? A few years back, we had the interest in some development there. Probably here at a location. That was to happen.
So is the the idea that we're we're thinking that housing is the best option? I feel like there's a lot of different uses for it than just looking at housing. I I understand the expenses, but I think we owe a lot of needs in this community. I'm just asking, like, if we're going to tear this building down, let's tear it down now before the corridor project happens, if that's maybe going to help us with that particular piece going forward if we're not going to utilize the building?
Correct.
I thought my understanding was we were not going to utilize the building because it really wasn't usable. Well, that's what they were saying, is that one of the options was retrofitting the building if they were to try to get that grant, that $3 million grant.
May I clarify on that?
Yeah.
So the so the the grant would be available, if the building is standing, and then we tear it down to build something new.
Oh, so you're not retrofitting. That's what I was asking.
Under no, under no, under no, it's considered retrofitting.
Okay, that's what I initially asked, okay.
All right, any further questions for Chris?
If if council has any other specific questions they think of, please forward them to me and we can work, I can work with Chris and get any questions, any specifics answered
I think, I think not with Chris, but I would like to hear what Mindot would have to say if we try to incorporate that corner into the corridor project and we were to take down that building, if that would be helpful. Because even with the bump outs, right now, y'all know, you've seen trucks try to navigate that corner and it's not realistic. And if they're going to do something that's going to be cement, what they're doing now with those plastic things, it's not helpful. So if we're going to go there, let's let's see what's going on.
I do have a note already to contact Mindot, check on the 30 and 60% design standards. Right now, they're in between those two stages and what they would require and what would or would not impact their work.
Okay.
Okay, well, Chris, thank you for your time.
Thanks, thanks, Meg, Meg. If if you don't mind, just one last, one last, last comment.
Sure.
Just, just, I mean, there are a lot of things that you have to consider about how to how to move forward with this. I think one of the one of the things that that really argues for affordable housing as a use, which is certainly not the only thing that you could do. But one of the things that's that's really advantageous about affordable housing is that is that the 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 city could conceivably redevelop that site with, I think, a really high-quality project, building. Where its cost was only the cost of of the site itself. I think a lot of other options are 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 much more likely to need additional subsidy that would have to come from the from the city itself. There aren't other good outside sources that are available. So one of the nice things about housing is that all that, that the city itself doesn't have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, under 8.04, discussion regarding the pool repairs of the Crookston Community Pool.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
To move. I'll second it.
Don and Clayton, thank you. Discussion. Hearing not going to roll call, please.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jerky?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Don and Derek, thank you. Roll call, please.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jerky?
Okay, motion carries. We do have a public hearing tonight. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, 7.01 is a public hearing on regulations to campus business in the city of Crookston.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Anyone who'd like to address the console, please come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Joe Mann, 110 Campbell Road. And I'm here to address on the municipal pot story that you guys have been kicking around for a while. And as a taxpayer, it's not going to work for me. And here's the reasons why. How many of you are in frictions and on the console? Brothers and sisters in Christ, how many of you are? None?
Right.
None of you are?
I'm leading separation of church and state, so I don't feel the justice.
No, sir, sir, just a point of order for the public comment. It's it's not intended to be a dialogue. It is an opportunity for you to voice your opinion. I'm voicing my opinion, sir. So please, any questions, please direct to the chair. Okay. Well, you know, you're all loved by God. The Father loves us all. And one of us, and each and every one of us, so we know, we can come to him for any decisions that we have to make. And we should, we should seek God's wisdom and guidance in all of this. And in Proverbs 6 verse 16 verses 9, it says, "We can make our plans, but the Lord determines our steps." And then 2 Peter 317, it says, "Therefore, dear friends, since you have been forewarned, be on your guard so that you won't..." be on your guard, so that you won't be carried away by the error of the lawless and fall from your secure positions." And so we know too what the American Lung Association says about marijuana clearly. Damages the human lungs and it suppresses the immune system, making people more susceptible to infections in the lung. And smoking and ingesting can include cognitive impairment, memory and attention issues, anxiety, depression, lack of motivation, and bring thoughts of suicide and just some of what mental health associations and the American Lung Association says about marijuana. So it seems to me, in the long run, it will cost us more in the long, in the long run. And think more of the, if you think more of the tax dollar it might bring than the well, or the well-being of your constituents, then I, then I think you are being greedy. And that says in Matthew 6:24, "No one can serve two masters; for either he will hate the one and love the other, or he will be devoted to the, to the one and despise the other." You cannot serve God and money. So that I, so as I ask, that you serve God and your constituents. One more important thing. Our police officers who deal with, with the outcome of drug and alcohol abuse 24/7, they see the mental health issues, the crisis of suicide, the broken families, the car accidents that our first responders go to. They do not need the city to own a pot store. They have to, they have enough on their plate. So I ask for God's peace and your discernment and issue in your heart and mind, consider these things. We thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else? I will close this public hearing. Okay, this brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Item 8.01 is a resolution regarding the approval of a non-commercial hangar lot lease, RZS Enterprises Incorporated, at the Kirkston Municipal Airport.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Your Honor.
Second. Don and Derek, thank you. Discussion. Jeff, anything to add?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a previously discussed. This is a lot lease drawn from the template approved by this council at the last meeting. It's a land lease where a private entity will be building a commercial hangar. The land lease itself is a market rate which is of minor amount. The primary benefit to the city will be tax dollars coming through. I've reached out to the county. The airport commission has approved the term of the lease. I believe it's 25 years. And it does, has been passed through legal and is recommended for approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Hidma?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.02 is a resolution regarding approving the total lawn care and landscaping independent contract for nuisance mowing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this order?
To move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Clayton, discussion?
Mayor, members of the council, we did put out an RFP for services for nuisance mowing to relieve some of the pressures from parks and rec as well as to relieve some of the risks to equipment with some of the tall grasses that are encountered. Total Lawn Care and Landscaping was determined to be the lowest responsible bidder and we respectfully request council to approve the contract.
So the, does, does what we're charging for the nuisance mowing, the people getting the charge offset? Or is it break even or?
The charge to the city would then, would be passed to the owners of the property as is current practice. This said, I believe it's $40 an hour.
This one's $47 per person.
$47 an hour.
So we're not being charged by the lawn mowing service?
No, we, we would be charged and then we would then recoup that from the property owner through the fines instated as per our policy.
And that's, that would just be for the homeowners? But you said they're also gonna be doing other mowing for the city?
This, this contract is for nuisance mowing only.
Only, okay. So it's just for houses that have?
Yes.
So instead of last year where we, Parks and Rec was doing it, it would just be, and it's a straight passer?
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Hidma?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.03 is a resolution regarding approving parks and recreation to repair the cooling tower at the Kirkston Sports Center.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
To move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Delane. Discussion.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a budgeted line, it's not the, this particular repair is not a line item. There's a cooling tower at the Kirkston Sports Center related to the glycol system that requires a repair of $13,800 roughly. And as it is, the amounts are available in the budget. However, this is not a specific item, line item, then it is above my spending limit. Asking, we're asking for the council approval to move forward with the repair.
Is this from the issue that we were having a small leak?
Yeah.
That we had this winter, does that cover that?
Jake? Yes.
So that issue was never repaired initially then? I thought we were having that repaired already.
No.
Okay, so this is gonna be the repair? Okay.
Did we, is that cooling tower ever been de-limed or whatever they do to get all the sediment buildup? Is that done yearly or? I'm just trying to figure out if that's part of the problem or not.
I couldn't tell if that's part of the problem or not, but every year when we close the CSC, we do go in and we do clean it ourselves. Never, since I've started my position, I've never hired anyone to do it. But my guys will go in there and will clean and power wash and things like that, so.
Sure, Dan.
Yep.
So another question, is there any funds that can be accessed from the legacy fund for projects such as this?
The legacy fund restrictions, it is meant to expand active sports at the CSC and it specifically excludes maintenance items.
Okay, further discussion?
So Jake, is this a one and done situation then? And expect us to continuously have leaks?
Well, I think this is the first leak, really, any maintenance problems we've had with it since the building was built. And that's pushed in 18 years.
Yeah, this is the first that I've known since I've started, so. If it's one and done, I can't tell you that. I can't predict if anything else is gonna break or not. But I know there's a big crack where the pipe and the condenser meet. So over time and over the winter, obviously, it's, it's gotten worse and needs to be repaired. So Lundseth is the company that I went through, because they are, they deal with big piping, like, you know, with the pool and things that we've done in the past, so, so yeah.
Does this contribute to, to maybe having longer ice times out there?
I couldn't tell you that answer. I, I don't know that answer for you, Mayor. I mean, I could look into it.
Sure, appreciate it.
Yep, I could definitely look into it for you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Hidma?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.04 is discussion regarding pool repairs at the Kirkston Community Pool.
Okay, this is discussion only. I'm sure we'll be looking for consensus one way or the other, but Jeff has got some information regarding what's going on.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, I was made aware this morning by the Parks and Rec Department. And Jake Scott and I did visit the pool to identify and look. Lundseth was in the building doing the repair previously authorized by the council on the heat exchanger coming off of the boiler. We recently completed a state mandated annual boiler inspection and one of the items that was identified was the repair of a relief valve, which is minimal. We're estimating approximately $400. However, upon further inspection and review, it's been identified that the control box and the circuit board for the boiler itself are no longer functional and are in need of replacement. The control box estimate is $5,700 for parts only. The circuit board is 600, between 5 and 600, parts only. It's estimated because we don't know how much the shipping is. We're not expecting that to be much because it's only a small circuit board of about 5 by 8 or 6 by 8. So the shipping should be minimal. Additionally, there's a float in the boiler that needs to be replaced, estimated to be about $1,800, $1,900. The question we have before us is when we identify the expenses that are in INCODE, our financial software is being already paid of $10,146. The install that's being completed today is $17,852. The removal of the old heat exchanger and the inspection was $3,965. If we were to add these new repairs of $5,700, 600, 1,900 and 400, we come up to $40,600 roughly. There were $25,000 budgeted in equipment maintenance for the pool. If you subtract the $10,000 that Fit and Finn kindly donated at a previous meeting, that leaves us at $30,600, you know, rough estimates. That is $5,500 over the equipment budget, repair budget for the pool. We are currently not quite five months into the year. In the building maintenance fund, we have $20,000 budgeted. We've spent roughly $11,125. We have roughly $8,900 remaining. If we were to transfer the $5,547 or $5,550 roughly from the building maintenance to bring the equipment maintenance to even with budget, that would give us a remainder of $3,350 roughly in equipment and building for the rest of the year. So we're asking council direction on approval to move forward with repair or alternatives.
I mean, I hate to say it, but I don't think I can vote to stick any more money into this being the situation that our city's in with the upcoming budget season. I mean, it's, it seems like every meeting now, we're sticking more money into this.
Maybe, I'm sorry.
I mean, only other thing is, is maybe the Fit and Finn Club can come up with a donation drive to pay for this to keep it going, but I mean, I just don't know if the taxpayers of Kirkston can continue to flip this bill.
So are we over budget or we have $3,000 if everything here happens?
In the equipment repair budget, we are, if we move forward with the needed repairs that have been identified, we are $5,500 over budget. It would be $15,000 except for the generosity of the Fit and Finn group.
How old is the boiler?
The boiler itself is in good condition. It's only about 14 or 15 years old.
We just went through our electrical panel. Did we replace that like 18 months, a year ago?
The, the circuit pan, the circuit board was replaced about 17 months ago. They normally come with a one-year warranty. The panel in question is currently obsolete and no longer in production. The manufacturer, I believe it was the manufacturer that was identified, has two on the shelf available.
So this may be passing the buck, but a few months ago, Park Board said to keep the pool open, I don't know if they said at all costs, but I would like to kick this back down to Park Board and let them see the numbers.
I agree. Yep.
Yep, and then on suggestions on where to get the money from other than, you know, we got the email with the levy dollars being cut by the state.
We haven't guaranteed that yet. That was just a proposal, a part of the budget. It hasn't been approved.
LGA is still in the air.
But it's a possibility.
There is a possibility. We can lose, estimated up to $140,000 is what. If the $20 million cut, as originally proposed, goes through, the city of Kirkston impact would be $140,000. That is up in the air.
So that, based on what your email said, that's a possibility of two, two levy points? Is that what you said?
I think three.
Three?
Roughly three. We also have, based on preliminary numbers from the county, we are looking at an increase in our tax capacity of roughly $200,000. And at our current, pardon me, at our current tax levy rate, if that holds true through budget season with $200,000 increase, we would be looking at about $170,000 increase, 170,000 to 180,000 increase in our tax levy while maintaining the same tax rate. So the two, we're in a situation where the two would almost offset. I know there is discussion at the state level. $10 million instead of $20 million cut to LGA has been tossed into the conversation. But as Councilmember Jertie said, nothing, we anticipate in the next week to 10 days having a much more firm answer on the LGA.
I think this, this, it needs to be a conversation that's had at Park and Rec, but I also think it needs to be a conversation that's had with Benefit. About fundraising.
Apologies, ma'am, I didn't, I didn't catch the last of that.
And having a conversation with Benefit about fundraising. I mean, I think at the end of the day, this is something that the community has fought for and asked for. And if this is something that they want, I, I don't think this is probably that much different than, you know, Castle Park or any of those things that were community fundraised for, that we give them the opportunity to try to do that.
But in the meantime, let's say we kick it down to Park and Rec, the Park Board.
What is that?
Then the pool is sitting idle until...
Right now, the condition of the pool is it is full. We're balancing chemicals. We anticipate a few days, several days for chemicals to be in balance. The heaters, the heat exchanger has been put in place. So any delays in moving it through, so the request is, does the council, as a consensus item, what is the direction? Do we, would we like to move forward with ordering the parts at the cost described? Or are we in a position where we want to put things on hold? I would ask Scott, if the, if the boiler were operational, how long would it take the pool to be at temperature and ready to open?
So basically, without doing what needs to be done now, the pool is in limbo, can't be used, correct?
It would, once we get the chemicals in balance, it could be used, but the water would be quite chilly.
Okay. At this point, if we get it in, I'm looking at probably four, four or five days to get it up to temperature. As of right now, everything is ready to go. We just have no way to heat the water now. So we'd be looking at four to five days to get it up to temp.
So with what's already been put into it, can it run or do we need these other parts before?
No, we could run it. It just, nobody's gonna get in it because right now your water temp is about 70 degrees.
And what I'm saying though, Scott, is that if you said you could get it up to temperature in four days, right?
Yeah, if I had these parts.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, I need these parts. Right now, I cannot produce any hot water.
Okay, okay. I think, no, no, go ahead. I think Morgan brought up a point that the Park and Rec was canceled this month. So I think this might have to be a special meeting for them, so just as an update.
Well, what do we expect? I mean, what? I mean, what, putting it on the Parks and Recs and they say, yeah, we need it, then, then what? But I mean, are they going to come up with any options?
Well, I don't know. I was just, like I said, I was just passing the buck. I mean, they're the ones that recommend to keep it up, open it.
We have to put a little bit more pressure on them as to how to keep it up and running, other than just keeping, spending taxpayer dollars to keep it up and running, you know?
So, but I think, you know, Park Board should hear the whole gist of it, too. It's just my thought.
I get it.
I think at the end of the day, the reason we have these community boards is because they are the community voices. And so I think it is up to them to a point to give us some direction. You know, I think at the end of the day, ultimately, obviously, the council makes those decisions, but we have those community boards for a reason. We have community members on those boards for a reason, right? And so I think that is also, in its own way, a sounding board for what is it that the community is wanting here.
So in the last Park Board meeting, there had the discussion of, of having these discussions of what do we do moving forward? Is it starting to plan for the future? So I don't think this is a dumb idea to at least bring it up to the Park Board and ask what their thoughts are moving forward on it.
And I think part of the conversation we had at the last meeting, too, was that at the end of the day, if we're asking Fin and Fit for what we need, why is it that we're not just asking them ultimately, here's the balance sheet of all the things that we need in order to make this a viable pool? And I think that is a lot more powerful than us doing these one-off things where, okay, we need $30,000 again. Let's find out what it's going to cost us in order to ultimately have it open with, we have the assessments, right? We can get the quotes. Let's do that and see what we can do for the community groups that are looking to fundraise for that in the first place.
So you're saying to move forward with getting the parts in?
I mean, I guess at this, were we not going to ask the Park and Rec Board first and then see what we can do with Fin and Fit, or no?
That's.
Because that'll put it on hold, is what he's saying.
You would put it on hold until the next council meeting, then June 2nd would be the next council meeting.
I'm fine with that.
So can we move the Park Board meeting up instead of?
I was going to say they would, yeah, need to have a special meeting.
Instead of having what, third, third?
I'll direct the Parks and Rec Director to reach out to the Parks Board and identify the soonest available time to have a quorum.
Because I think, you know, Memorial Weekend has snuck up on it, so it's already this coming weekend. So I think, you know, town would be pretty someone idle. People moving around, out of town, I don't know.
And what ultimately, if we were to ask Fin and Fit or whoever for what the funding is that we need, what would that total amount be?
Well, I, that's, that's a very easy question to ask. It's difficult to answer because in order to go met sum zero, well, right now, I can transfer building maintenance funds over to equipment, but maintenance.
But this is parts only.
Because this is with, it is all within the same pool budget. I can, I can move that money, 5,547, over to cover the difference right now. It would leave us about $3,300 in the building maintenance fund. That, what that would entail with that $3,300 would be the sole remaining funds for building or equipment maintenance.
For the pool or for everything?
For the pool.
Okay.
Now, that being said, we are above the curve in revenue for the pool.
Okay, so why aren't we just doing that then if the, if the funding is available?
That is the question that I'm asking because it's over, it is over the budget. And at that point, once it becomes over the budget, by what I've, my interpretation of previous council direction is to ask, particularly at this facility, at the last budget, it was identified, if, if it goes over budget, we cease funding. So I'm asking for the council's approval to move forward and move these funds from building maintenance.
Because is it not my understanding, when we were doing budgeting, we all agreed if it was over 20, if we spent over $25,000, we were not spending anymore.
But the 5,500 that he wants to pull to cover, this is parts only. This isn't labor or travel. We don't know if the insulation's coming from Grand Forks or Fargo.
It would be, it's 6,300 for the two parts required. We anticipate installation would be minimal, under, under 500.
But the funding is available in one of the pool.
One of the pool accounts, yes, ma'am. However, again, we are less than halfway through the year. I do not have a crystal ball and know what we've entailed over the last two months.
Well, we just tabled, I mean, how much? How much an expense did we just table in the last meeting that we're going to, it's going to come upon us in the next fiscal year that we, we're kicking the can down the road for a lot of the maintenance that we discussed in the last, I think, last meeting, correct?
For the pool?
Yeah.
But additional?
I mean, Scott was up here talking about a bunch of stuff that we were going to push to next year.
Scott, can you clarify what that was?
The maintenance issues that we're looking at that would probably get put off. I was able to actually, with the closure, take care of one of them already. It didn't cost us anything because I had everything, so I was able to replace the tile. You know, the biggest maintenance issues we're looking at right now, in my opinion, are just cleaning and, you know, draining again at some point and cleaning the bottom. Otherwise, for the most part, other maintenance issues, you know, obviously, we got the building, but I've got some doors that need some maintenance issues, but.
Was it just some issue with the pool lights?
Yeah, I got the issue with pool lights. And I've been working, I wasn't able to do anything with those.
That has to be drained, right? That has to be drained, right?
To redo the pool lights, yes, we would have to drain.
We'd have to do the same thing for cleaning of it.
All right, that's why we pushed it off till when he was going to clean it.
Right, and I got lucky with this. When we had such a downtime, I was able to get it low enough where I could get the tiles put in because I, I just figured, we were sitting and talked to Jeff about it and with us sitting there and we had the tile for free, it didn't make any sense not to.
Do it.
To do it, so.
That makes sense.
But the, the lights and the cleaning, you know, they're going to be, I've, I've gotten another estimate on the lights and we're looking at anywhere, depending on where we hit the lights, we're looking at anywhere from 500 to 1,500 per light.
How many lights?
We need four.
1,500?
Yeah, five to 1,500, depending on which company we go with, because they range, they range anywhere from 12 volt to 120 volt. And our system actually takes 120 volt. So as far as that goes, from a maintenance standpoint, you know, the cleaning obviously is only going to cost us labor. It's the lights that we're looking at down the road that have to be replaced.
And what does it cost to drain the pool?
I can't answer that. I don't know what the rate, what are, from the, from the water department, I'm sorry.
I guess, understanding now that, like, the funding is there, it's just in a different account. I mean, do we just go forward with what we need to go forward with? And the conversation actually comes back here if there is a lack of funding?
So that money, that money was budgeted for something else, right? It wasn't, even though it's there and hasn't been spent yet, it's been budgeted for something else.
It's budgeted, it is budgeted for building maintenance. Out of the building maintenance, we budgeted 20,000 year-to-date. We've expended 11,127. We have 8,893 remaining. So we're, again, just for transparency, we are less than one-half of the way through the year, and we have spent 55% of this budget.
So you talked about the revenue, we're over revenue, right?
We are, we are over the curve for our revenue projections.
How much are we over the revenue portion so far?
Roughly 10 to 12,000.
So if we look at it that way, we can use roughly 10 to 1,000, 12,000 in the, where we could spend category because we didn't budget that much for it to make that much money, correct?
If the, the reason that I say that we're above the curve is because we're not yet above the budget. And because this year, we introduced the annual passes and quarterly passes, we don't yet know, we don't have the data history to know what the second half revenue is going to look like versus the first half. If we've, if the first half was primarily annual passes, then that means our second half revenue is going to be below the curve and it may even out. If the first half was not primarily annual passes, then the second half will stay above the curve. Right now, we, we don't have a way to really break down easily the, how those numbers break out. So within the software that we have.
Scott, when, when, when does the first round of swimming lessons start for, for youth?
Jake? June 2nd. June 2nd.
I think, I think those two things are.
I don't know how you put that off, then. I guess that's, that's kind of a big, big thing and a big, big source of income.
Yeah, and I think when you were talking about, we're only halfway through, well, if we don't spend the money, then we're not utilizing the pool. So it doesn't matter if we're halfway through that, right? We're just not utilizing it. I think the other thing, too, is that.
The question is, is how high do we want to raise the levy this fall?
Well, I think that that conversation can happen if, if we actually are going over budget. I think that we should be trying to do what we can do to get the utilization.
We are over budget because the money that he's going to pull from has been budgeted other places.
Well, it's budgeted within the pool budget.
If that money needs to be spent.
I understand that.
A point, a point of order for the council, please, if we can please address the chair as part of protocol.
I think, I don't know.
Can I just ask, I mean, here, here's my thought, is one of two ways. We've already spent the money, what's a couple thousand more, whatever. But are we going to get to the point where we just keep spending this money? And then it's July and we are completely out of the budget? Now we're over budget everywhere else. We're looking to try to find money, and there is money that we have spent to get us another 30 days. And it is just money that we have wasted?
Yes, and then we're going to have all these new parts in there that we, we just spent money on. And now in, in July, August, something else is going to come up and we can't, we're over our budget, we can't use it. So I mean, at some point in time, whether it's now or July or August, it's inevitable of what we're looking at. So.
I think us being up in revenue is a testament to the utilization of the pool, and I think that needs to be considered.
Up in revenue, but you've still got expenditures down the road.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, not everything's going to be a huge revenue source, we know that.
I can't give a dollar amount. However, I can say that with the pool being down for the period of time that it has, one of the large expenses of the pool is utilities. And the pumps, with the pool being down, with the water levels being down, have not been running. So we have saved, I can't speak to how much, but there has been some minimal savings in utility costs over the last several weeks.
I agree with us going to Park Board to decide what they think would be best in recommendation, if they could have a meeting before next council meeting. I would think that wouldn't, it needs to be soon.
Well, yeah, I think Park Director could schedule a meeting right after Memorial Weekend.
I just had a question with that because I've never done this before, but do you have to give us a certain amount of notice, like a 24-hour or?
Similar days.
Well, three days.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Also, though, just, I just wanted to clarify, remember, this is to know whether or not if we're going to open it or, so that's what his consensus is because if there are swim lessons starting June 2nd, I wanted to remind the council that council meeting is June 2nd. So in order for us to move forward with, to be able to open the pool, I just wanted to let you guys know that as well.
In order, in order for us to meet the timelines for the swimming lessons, we would need to, I would need to have a consensus to authorize Jake to order the parts to move forward, based on the travel, travel time logistics to get the parts, get them installed, and then bring the pool up to temperature for use. That would bring us right at Memorial Day.
So do you?
As a best estimate.
So you're asking us to approve it so it doesn't have to be approved council meeting?
We did, because of the timing of the notice of what went through, we did not have time to draft an actual resolution. That's why I'm just simply asking for the consensus to move forward, to move the money from building maintenance to.
And why are we going to kick it to the Park?
The others and then, and to order the part, and order the parts to be prepared to install.
I would like to see it move forward and then also have the Park Board meet and start getting creative and come up with ideas.
Then, well, then we can just leave the Park Board meeting as regular scheduled, third weekend, third Monday in June. If we're going to have the consensus, is go ahead and get the parts and get the pool up and running.
I would second that.
I'm thirty.
There's a, no vote, it's just consensus for Jeff to move forward with.
Just say aye.
Because then we can bring forth on the council meeting on the second, to be able to give you the whole breakdown of the resolution of what everything cost in the resolution.
And I'll just sign off on it that day.
Then you would sign off.
That way, that way, we, we would have the official vote at that point.
And we can address it now.
The consensus is, is to move forward so they can get the parts here and put it in or not. So consensus of the council.
I say we just put it on hold.
Move forward, move forward.
Move forward.
Move forward.
And we'll delay it on hold.
So we have one, two, three, four to two? So four to two?
Are we going to vote on this?
Well, it's not, it's not a vote.
It's a consensus.
At this point, a, a simple majority. The charter identifies a vote of five for a resolution. However, this is a consensus, it's not a vote.
So you don't have to hear me a or nay? It's a tough decision. I guess is what is kicking me to say yes is just because the swimming lessons are already booked.
Yep.
If they weren't booked, it'd be different. So I'm saying consensus move forward.
I understood that we have a general consensus with some dissent to move forward, ordering the parts to prepare the pool for the swim lessons.
And then Jake, would you please have an agenda item on this on the next Park Board meeting? And also, you know, kind of a rundown of what we have vested in of the pool already, and we're not even midway through the year.
Yeah, I have that with me already, but yeah, I will have it ready on Park Board.
Then some creative thinking outside the box regarding what do we do next? See what their thoughts are?
Yep.
I know nothing can happen overnight, but might as well get something going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we sell naming rights to the building?
All right.
Just one, one further note, Mr. Mayor. Within the packet is a year-to-date budget for the council with all of our year-to-date expenditures. However, as was identified with, that is as of April 30th, as was identified with the pool discussion, please note that there may be outstanding bills from previously authorized charges to come through so that that is a living document and it changes on a daily basis. However, that is where we stand as of April 30th.
All right, thank you. Reports, Jeff, anything more to add?
I believe that, let's see, I just had an update that we had mentioned earlier, legislature, they're, they're identifying roughly $456 million in surplus for the near term, which is a reduction from 600 million at the state level. The near and far-term projections have worsened on a statewide, on the state budget. There are no specific cuts identified as of yet from the legislature in the biennial budget, however. However, it is anticipated that LGA will be a topic of great discussion. Two numbers that have been floated is a $20 million cut statewide and a $10 million cut statewide. As I previously mentioned, a $20 million cut would impact us by approximately $140,000 here in Crookston. So I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on that. And again, the request of funding that we have for the Highway 2 project is still in the transportation bill. However, we'll, in the next week to 10 days, we'll have more information moving forward on that item.
And we have reached out to them to request, we have, we've reached out to them, to the senators who are on those committees and their representatives.
Now, just regarding the LGA and all the senators looking at the cuts in LGA, but the House is not on board.
Correct.
So, all right.
To your representatives.
Yeah.
Yes. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, you have my written report, then if you have any time available for any other questions.
Thank you. Don, anything tonight?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Derek?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
You, Lane?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Morgan?
Um, I went to the 13th Annual Northern Valley Police Week Memorial Service. Last week was National Memorial for the Police. Um, so I just want to thank our Crookston PD for everything that they do for our community. Um, I also went to the Crookston Fire Department Open House. You guys did a great job there. That was a lot of fun. So thank you for putting that on for our community. That was really good. Um, and I got to go out and experience the new turf in the arena last week, I think, and it was really nice. So any families that have not gone out should definitely take advantage of that.
Clayton?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Christie?
Um, just what I originally mentioned, that we've been reaching out to the representatives regarding, I mean, we need to cut a corridor and it has not been cut as of yet, unless you've heard anything. Nope, I haven't either. So hopefully it's still there.
All right. Thank you. Uh, just a quick thing here. I did a proclamation, the last council meeting was Cindy Strum, and she reached out to me again regarding May 21st about wearing green to celebrate mental health. And basically what it is, is wear green and support mental health awareness in May as the official color for mental health awareness. Green represents renewal, hope, vitality. Join us in wearing green to help show support, break down stigma. She also was saying that, you know, if any businesses in Crookston that were wearing green, she would like to see a picture of it sent to her at Riverview. Other than that, I just wish everybody a safe and happy Memorial Weekend coming up. And, you know, just think about all the vets that gave us our freedom and where we're at today. Uh, that's all I've got. Just a reminder, there will be a Ways and Means meeting tonight, so nothing else come before council. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Health. I am a medical laboratory technician. I've been in that position ever since I moved to Crookston in two thousand and one. I'm married. My husband, Dwayne, and we have a son that will be a senior next fall, taking all P S E O classes. He hopes to be a air traffic controller. I think what I can help Crookston with is bringing in some new ideas. Just helping. Like I said, with new ideas, getting maybe some new businesses. Recruiting people to stay in town or to come to Crookston would be what I think the city is needing right now. Getting new businesses, when I moved to Crookston twenty-four years ago, there were businesses all along Main Street. And most of those storefronts are empty now, which is so unfortunate. I just think we need to be able to bring new businesses and opportunities to the city. Whether it's large businesses or small, small and pop businesses, I'd rather see that than a major corporation come in. But that's, you know, all tax base. I, I just, I feel like I can bring. I do a lot of detail work with my job, writing policies, procedures, following those. Making it easy for people to understand what they need to do to provide information for the doctors and nurses and the hospital and then just using that to provide that to the citizens of Crookston.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Communication is, I think, the key to everything. We need to be open and transparent with everybody that you see and talk to. You need to be a people, a person for the people. And give everybody a fair chance to, to live their life the way that they want to. Or, you know, according to the laws, of course. But just communication is like a hundred percent. And being open to everybody else's ideas.
Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
I've had disagreements with coworkers. And a lot of times it's because they're not seeing my way of thinking or I'm not seeing their way of thinking. And unless you sit down and speak with that person, you will never get it resolved. And it becomes bad feelings in the end. So, you know, like I said, I've had disagreements and we've all come to the table and sat down and, and made that thing work.
What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
I would think that the fresh ideas coming in. And being a member of the community as long, you know, for as long as I have, I have, you know, a teenager. That I think that there needs to be more activities necessarily, not necessarily involving sports activities for the teens and the children of this town. Just, yeah, just to provide more information for people and activities.
Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation in the outcome?
I go back to my job and dealing with people that are maybe upset over something. And they don't want you to tell them what you can't do, they want you to tell you what they can do for you. But most of that is just listening to their complaint and repeating it back to them, making sure that you understand what they're trying to say. And then between the parties involved, we try to resolve that, that issue and that problem for them.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
Tough one.
You know, we could pass on that and come back to it.
Well, no, I, I'm trying to think of how to, how to phrase it. Yeah.
Sometimes you have to anonymize your answer. That may take a moment.
I have, I also work at the hospital up in Hallock. Just as an on-call position in their laboratory there. And right now they're dealing with some very difficult issues with personalities. And I have been presented with different stories, different, very different stories of things that have happened. And the, the only right thing to do is the way that it's supposed to be done, not cutting a corner. Putting out information that's not correct. And I have a very hard time with people that lie to me. And I don't want to be associated with those people any longer. That's not really an ethics question, but I believe in the truth and I try and live my life that way.
How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example if you can.
Can you repeat that?
How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? And share an example.
You need to cooperate with the people that are around you. And you also need to think on your own. So if there's two different opinions of something, you need to weigh the differences and decide what's right, what's wrong. I don't have an example because I can't do that right now, sorry. You just have to be able to communicate and your own beliefs are yours, nobody else's. And you just have to come to a compromise with people.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
Be honest with you, none. I am on a committee at Trinity Lutheran that we are trying to, have tried to get people to be on our board, which is very difficult to do. Because it's all volunteer and nobody really wants to spend their extra time doing that. So it's a lot of phone calling, making, trying to convince them that they need to come in and help you out. I do, you know, as much volunteer work as I can that time permits at the hospital. As far as their different internal volunteering at the Fair Board and the, helping out the Fair and different activities.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
Listen. Sometimes their idea of what's actually happening and what their thought process is are always be measuring out be the same. So if you can try and propose to them what, what's actually happening rather than what the media has put out or what the gossip has put out and just try to redirect hopefully their thought process.
There's all of the questions we have prepared. Thank you very much for your time and if you have any questions of the board.
I, no.
Can I ask a question? What do you believe are the Crookston's top three priorities? What do you believe the city of Crookston's top three priorities are?
Housing, jobs, and infrastructure.
Anybody else?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do you like to ask it of every candidate or would you like me to include it in the series?
I just wrote it down. Oh, then yeah, if you can, that would be great.
Just include it in the series?
Brandon, correct?
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you for putting your name in for this. Jeff will answer the questions and there may be one follow-up afterwards, so.
I'm gonna ask them, sir. I know the answers. Thank you for taking the time to come and visit with us. My name is Jeff, I'm the city administrator and I believe you know most of the council members. So first question is, tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position?
I'm a teacher here in town, I school. The reason I should be interested, I just want to be more involved in my community. When I was growing up, I did live here, I moved away. And just came back as a teacher. So just looking for more community involvement, I'm running the Rotary. Rescue, I help school fund. Working on A H D, all sorts of things.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
I think it's having a certain level of commitment. Like there should, you should never all be in consensus, it's not helpful. But you should be able to have the consensus, tough decisions, and issues. And finding each other's strengths, I mean, no one is perfect at everything. So you find what one person's good at and hopefully you can complement what they're not.
Thank you. Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
I'm a teacher, I'm a, but well, I'm, I'm a late-life teacher, so I did work as an accounting manager. Quite often I was the person people came to resolve issues because that was on stage. So a number of times I'm the one that facilitate those discussions. I'm generally, people come to me because I am more of a moderate person. I'm very, fairly to any extreme, try to bring balance to any kind of conversation I have.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
Maybe an outsider's view, you know, I wasn't, I haven't lived here all my life. Also, I think just the perspective of a yeah, I would say a newcomer to the community. And seeing how it changed from when I lived here. What, what I liked about what has changed from what I miss and what I think in the future.
Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation in the outcome?
Teacher, I just don't have to do this every day. But generally, that's what I do, I'm a listener, I'm a people person. If you have a conversation with me, it may seem like I'm not overly involved with the back and forth. It seem where it's important to interject. I don't interact with, just for the purpose of talking, interject when it's important.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
I would say when I worked in the auto industry, I also was a warranty minister. And being asked to falsify documents to the manufacturer, warranty cover through the line there. When they were asking that, absolutely used, I was known for by our district managers to manufacture that. So they knew that if I, what I told them was, it was wrong. I wouldn't, I wouldn't falsify it when, just so the owner will misuse the vehicle, get what I said.
Thank you. How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example.
Well, generally on any committee that I've ever been on. I am very much an independent-minded person, I have, I make up my own mind. But I like to work to see what others thought means that I'm bendable. So when I was in charge of policies and procedures at High Grade S T S U, we had discussions. I don't have an idea of where I thought the policy and the procedures would go, I might, but I was most definitely interested in other people's opinions and not completely their position.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
Not much. I have, I'm in on committees such as policies and procedures committees. And then I'm on now the executive board, the Rotary Club is a, and the, and I'm the co-founder and treasurer of our local board, who are the finest in the agency, right?
What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
I think transparency is a big factor. If you try to hide things from the public, that one they find out the truth. So being upfront, I think is key. And being open to dialogue. Including them in the problem solving.
And lastly, what are, what do you feel are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
I think, and the big one would be affordable. Anything to do with helping alleviate some of the stresses of poverty in the community. Whether it's promoting or enabling, like the bus, sorts of programs, like things or whatever. Just from the students that I work with, I struggle with poverty and I'm seeing that as a major issue that needs to be dealt with. Another issue just from the fact that I work in an animal rescue, it's like a cat colony problem around town. I don't know if that's something like the top five, but it's definitely an issue that I think needs to be addressed. Responsible pet ownership.
That is, that are, that's all the questions that we have. Thank you for your time and if you have any questions for the board, it would be, we appreciate hearing.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Gina.
Hi.
Hello.
You can either stand or sit down, whatever you're most comfortable with. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for having me. My understanding is you guys have a bunch of questions for me, so I'll let you guys do the asking, I guess.
I have no official purpose here whatsoever other than reading the words on these pages.
That's fair.
So thank you, thank you for kind of applying. I believe you're probably familiar with most of the council members. First one is, tell us about yourself and why are you interested in the position?
Little about myself, I'm a mom of four kids and I also work full-time and part-time and volunteer. I guess for my job, full-time, I'm a product manager at Digiki. I've been doing that for, well, not even quite a year, but I bounced around, I get bored easy, so. Initially started out in receiving and then went to sales and then product management. While I, after I started there, I actually went to school part-time to get my E M T certification. So I work part-time for Sanford and Thibodeau Falls Sanford Ambulance. And I'm on the S R T team, so I work with Thibodeau Falls P D with their SWAT team and do a lot of trainings. So spend a lot of time probably working, more so than anything. But part-time, I am also a division director for Toastmasters International. It's a public speaking group and helps people to gain confidence and be able to seek out leadership positions for people that don't typically probably think of themselves as a leader. And I guess on top of that, I have a couple of dogs, a fish tank. My kids are busy, they age from seventeen all the way down to nine. And they go to school in town here. I've been here since 2011 here in Crookston, so kind of been here for quite a while. But initially I was working at home for a unit of healthcare, I did that for thirteen years. So I've worked from home for a long time. When COVID happened, I actually stepped away from that work because there was so much overtime and it just didn't really make sense for my family for me to continue doing that, so. And now I've just kind of gotten to the point where I feel like I need to do something more for my community, not just for, you know, a community outside of where I live. So I really like the idea of being involved more here in Crookston. I don't work in town currently, but I'm very involved, you know, with all my kids being in sports. My oldest son is in wrestling and track, my daughter's in hockey and softball. And then my youngest son, Liam, he's in Cub Scouts in town, he's not super interested in sports, I guess, he's more of a video gamer. And then my youngest daughter, she's in dance and kind of wants to be in Boy Scouts, so we'll see. But yeah, that's, that's a little bit about me. I just really think that this board would probably give me the opportunity to have more involvement in our community and be able to have an understanding of more so about what's going on and be able to help this community prosper. Because I feel like there's a lot of things that can be done here. Like this, this community has the capability of so much potential right now. But I feel like it's just not really utilized maybe in the right ways. You know, even the thing with the pool, I mean, if we were to step back and not actually do the repairs, I mean, the revenue that could come in, you know, very soon on June second would not be revenue that would be coming in and that would be a detriment. And then on top of it, I mean, how much longer if that were to go on? I mean, how much more would it cost in the long run? And then considering the stuff that he's talking about with replacing lights, if the bulbs are really only five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a piece for each bulb, I mean, at that point, when, wouldn't you want to start looking at the cost of just new fixtures? Because if you need to replace those bulbs and considering that they're one hundred and twenty volt bulbs, those are going to continue to cost additional funds to continue running them. I mean, there's, it's, it's kind of a domino effect. So I mean, overall, I need to kind of look at the broader scheme of things and see what makes the most sense for that to continue running. I mean, efficiency is kind of where we're headed and if we're not continuing to focus more on efficiency, it's not really going to make much sense to continue to have that liability, so, yeah.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Camaraderie and being able to work with one another, but also honesty, being able to deal with the hard stuff together. Sometimes I feel like a team actually gets closer together when they have to go through some harder situations. And being able to call out one another, but also being willing to consider it constructive criticism and not feel like you're attacked, but also, you know, work together on really what the greater good is, I think.
Thank you. Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
That's a good question. I actually have had probably multiple situations like that currently. I have one that's going on with, so I work with suppliers. One of my suppliers is I T T Cannon and we have N P Is, which is new product that we introduce into the market. And the agreement in the contract is that we can return parts if they don't sell within a certain length of time. And that contract hasn't been upheld by the other party. And in that, I mean, I've been working with everybody else at my company to figure out how to get past this and be able to continue to taking on new product. And really it's, it's stepping back and not allowing us to take on new product for a time being until we can get that side of the agreement to actually follow through. Because it's the only thing that really makes sense for the company. I don't think it makes sense to not bring on new product because that's how we actually make funds and that's how we continue to expand and grow. But overall, I mean, there has to be equality and we have to both withhold our sides of the contract. So, I mean, stuff like that happens, but I think it's important to actually put it all out on the table with everybody in one room. Sometimes that is what needs to happen and really take the contract initially and spell it out and say this is what was agreed upon, this is what's currently happening and this is what should be done if the contract is actually going to completely follow through. So, I mean, there's, I guess there's a number of things, but maybe even working on a more individual level. I've had somebody that was battling with cancer and needed to step back from, from his job. And we kind of just kind of worked together to encourage him to continue working, but at the same time, we stepped up as a team to try to help him out so that he didn't have to do so much. So, I mean, in situations, yeah, times get tough, but we try to work together, I guess.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
I have a tendency to think outside the box, sort of speak. I don't know, I guess I kind of do that in the job that I'm doing now too. I guess that's sort of why I was hired. I'm willing to speak up about something that's important, you know, sometimes calling out the elephant in the room is necessary and somebody needs to do it. And a lot of times, you know, everybody's aware of it, but not everybody is willing to speak up and actually say something about it. And I think especially in a medium such as this, I think it's necessary to call out those things because if you don't, I mean, you're not really going to move forward if you continue to kind of hide behind the curtain, so, yeah.
Thank you. Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation in the outcome?
Well, that's a good question. I actually worked in sales for quite a while and I think for the most part, I honestly probably spent more time listening and hearing out what people had to say before speaking myself. Because of a lot of situations, it tends to be just that, you know, people will actually just want to vent and they want to have somebody actually there to listen to them and hear what they have to say. and hear what they have to say, not necessarily following through with exactly what they're sort of demanding, but overall, just having an understanding with them, being willing to listen to them and hear them out, and at the same time, maybe explaining to them that you do understand it, but you need to do what's best for everybody, not necessarily just what they're expecting, so, yeah.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
It's a tough question. I guess I can't totally think of like a specific one right now, but I think there's a lot of scenarios where like ethically speaking, you can't always do what's considered best, but, you know, you have to try to make the best choice. Financially, and with regard to the greater good, or for how many people it's affected. Trying to think of something where like my ethics have been tested. Probably in my job, my last job, when I worked at United Healthcare. I actually stepped away from that job because they needed to do significant, I needed to do significantly more overtime because of so many claims that were coming in, I processed insurance. And, I wanted to continue to stay there, I wanted to continue to do my job and continue to help out all the people, like all the claims that were coming in, and make sure that everything was done. I was very good at my job, I was very efficient, but I had to step back because it just didn't make sense for me and my family. You know, my kids were all at home, and I was working from home, and then trying to do significantly more overtime. I did ask for a raise, and every person that I talked to there told me that they didn't have the ability to give me a raise, and then I finally just decided that I am done, because I can't continue working for a company where everybody that I work for doesn't even have the ability in giving me any kind of a raise or anything with regard to my pay, so it just didn't make sense to me.
Thank you. How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking, and share an example?
I think it's important to cooperate with a bunch of other people, but I also think it's really important to get individual views. And sometimes, you can't always get an individual view when you have a bunch of people in a big room, and you need to take some time to step away and talk to somebody one-on-one to actually get their true opinion. Sometimes people aren't willing to speak for themselves, or really say what they're truly feeling when they're in a larger group, so, there's times where, yes, it's great to have that cooperation, but sometimes having that individual feedback, and then taking a consensus from everything that you've gathered, and then bringing it back in, not necessarily calling out names, but explaining to everybody what you've gathered from everyone, and then trying to, you know, overall, like make a decision after that. I think it's important to have that individual viewpoint, because you don't always get it when you're in a big group of people.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
Can't say a lot, I guess I've been the secretary at Toastmasters, and then the area director, and then a division director, and I've done that for the last three years, so, I've done that. And then right now, I work with product management, so I tend to work with a lot of suppliers, set up agendas, go over contracts, navigate kind of a lot of things, just with multiple different suppliers. I have twenty-something suppliers that I work with on a regular basis. So I suppose in some sense, I guess I do work with a lot of the directors at DigiKey, so, and my day-to-day work.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
I would like to say honesty, but honesty isn't always perfect when it comes to the public. It can make people angry, but I do think that it's important to have a broad overview of everything so that people have a good understanding. I guess when you communicate with the public in a general sense, like maybe just, you know, uptown somewhere, if there happens to be like Oxcar Days or something, I think it's important to try to keep things light when you're in that kind of a setting, because of, you know, just some of the attitudes and different things that can happen. I guess being on the SRT team, I'm aware of so many different situations that we talk about where there can be not so good of people around, and things become unfriendly pretty quickly. So I think it's kind of important to keep things sort of lighter sometimes when dealing with the public, but I guess in a situation such as this, I think it's important to be very honest and direct. So I guess it ultimately depends on the situation and where we're at.
What, what do you feel are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
Um, I would have to say children, I think is probably one of them. Continuing to sustain the community, just overall, and I guess the last one would probably be probably the elder community, and making sure that everybody is properly taken care of, and people are watching out for one another. You know, I think, I think this community focuses more so on relationships and the children and the people that we take care of here, more than anything. But I do think that it would be nicer if it was focused a little bit more on businesses, because I feel like there's not as many businesses in this community as probably should be to be able to make it a little bit more sustainable.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your time, that's, that's all the questions that we have for you, and if you have any questions for us.
Yeah, okay. I guess, well, one question is, would this be like a full-time job, or would it be part-time?
This would be essentially two meetings a month, plus a few other, well, every member of the council does get assigned to other various boards and as a liaison to other boards, but it is fair, fairly part-time in nature.
I think it depends on how involved. I probably spend ten plus, ten to fifteen hours a week on city.
Okay.
I think the other thing, too, is during budgeting season, you meet almost every Monday.
Yeah.
For like several months, so.
And it can be a couple. Sounds good. Just want to make sure that it's something that would be doable. Like, I do work full-time and part-time, but I do have room in my schedule to kind of move my work schedule around, too, so. Ultimately, I just, you know, want to try to help this community out if I can. But, if I could ask you guys, what is something that you guys have done here as being on this board that has probably helped the community since you've been here? Can any of you, like, share something that you feel has, like, impacted the community?
I think we tried to bring the city up to date. We're still trying hard to bring our city up to date with technology and different things like that. Speaking for myself, when I first got on council, I think we're, we work together as a council better than some of the councils in the past. So I, I think that's kind of an achievement, and, you know, we're trying hard to do what's best for the community. As you heard tonight, we had some poll discussion, which is very difficult, and, but, I mean, overall, I think as a, as a, as a council, you know, we, there's definitely differences, but I think we sometimes just agree to disagree and move on. I don't think anybody really holds any animosity towards anybody or anything.
I think transparency is another thing. When I first got on council, nothing was recorded, nothing was live. The only way that you could actually hear about a council meeting was an audio recording, and there was nothing associated with that as far as agenda or anything like that. So I've come along at least in just the transparency of being able to access, being here, or being on YouTube, or watching it on live public access, which is a huge thing. And I think that was really helpful in the sense that a lot of times, people would get their soundbite from the news report or the radio, and so it would only be like one perspective, or it'd only be certain that that was a huge thing for us to have a more transparent opportunity for people.
I think for myself, it was years ago assisting the fire department and alongside the city administrator, getting the North End Fire Station. I think that was one of the key things that comes to mind for myself. So, that's something that was years of not running a north station. So, I think with the former fire chief and the city administrator, the three of us worked very hard and managed to get it, with the council's help, to get it done, so.
Myself, it's trying to be involved with UMC a little more. You know, the track seemed to be a dividing line, but I do go to UMC's graduations, and then move in, in August, when the students are moving in. I go out there, and, because they're all lined up, and they got all these students that are there helping move their belongings into their dorm rooms, but I walk the parking lot, and I welcome all the students from Crookston and tell them who I am, and really enjoy it, you know, and I think the parents, you know, they really appreciate it, too, so, it's fun.
That's cool.
I think mine would be, being on city council has afforded me to be part of a lot of different groups and pull a lot of different groups together for early childhood, that's kind of my big passion there. And we're working on some really cool projects, and there's, there's a lot of movement on that end, on how we can develop that and make this a town for young families to want to be here, and how we support them on that, so. It's been kind of fun to be able to see, starting that and evolve and working with different groups and pulling that all together.
Yeah, that's cool. I really like the idea of it being more of a town where people want to work with their children, and I, I think the track and the football fields and everything that they're putting over there is probably going to help draw some more families in, but I still feel like there's still a number of things that this community can probably do to help build it up. I mean, you know, when it comes to maybe stores and restaurants and stuff, because I know for a lot of people, we tend to leave town to go to those things versus staying here, and it would be nice to see more businesses in town here that can help foster, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
Welcome, you can either sit down if you're more comfortable, or you can stand, whatever you prefer.
I'll start with standing.
All right.
I think if it becomes
Thank you for being here.
challenging, I guess I'll sit, you know, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for having this opportunity for us to fill this vacancy. I'm Joseph Chastel.
Well, welcome, thank you for applying. We met earlier today, I believe, I'm Jeff, city administrator, and I've been nominated to read the questions.
Okay.
Other than that, I have no official purpose here whatsoever.
I doubt that, but I will do with that, thank you, Jeff.
Tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position?
Yeah, my name is again Joseph Chastel, I live on Groveland Avenue. I'm a long-term educator, I work at the University of Minnesota-Crookston. I, I have a bachelor of arts, a master of science, a PhD in environmental biology. I love this community, and I have a family, a wife and a daughter. My daughter's attending University of Minnesota-Crookston, she's 21. I have a leadership experience, both in higher education and outside of higher education, in previous boards. Traveled around a bit, we've been here for 11 years. Before here, I was in Pennsylvania. Led STEM programs, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. When I came here, I came as an administrator, because I was interested in seeing the growth of programs and seeing other people succeed. So I, I have a passion for helping people, and I wanted to take that, those leadership skills and apply them to something else. Want a second part of your question?
Yes. Okay.
About yourself, and why are you interested in this position, sir?
I'm passionate about this community, I think it's a great place to be. I go to different places, I recognize people, we quickly go into conversation, and it's, it's a place that I, I think it needs to be maintained, and I see that there are some challenges, and those who have skill sets to help meet those challenges, and make sure that this community grows in the right direction, I think it's important to step forward and help in that regard, hence I'm here.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, team, teamwork, in this case with the council, being able to work together, to have patience and to listen. Communication skills are of utmost importance. Cohesiveness is essential. You know, listening out in the hallway to you all, going back and forth, it's important to have people speak what they think, and people to reflect on what's stated, not just what other people say, but also what they say as well. Once you hear your words out loud, so I think picking a team that, that is respectful of others and have a sense of professionalism is of key importance. Willingness and ability to look at the other side, to realize that there are multiple viewpoints, and there can be cultural diversity as well.
Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer?
Well, not everyone gets along all the time, and that's, and they say that we can waste a lot of time, even when you get two people in the room, you're not going to agree on everything, and that's just part of being human, and that's okay. I, I've worked with staff, in fact, the members of multiple universities, and they don't always get along. And, and I don't expect them to, and I don't always want them to, because of different beliefs, because of different educational backgrounds, and where they live, and so on. So, I, I can think of many examples, but in, in one case, I remember that at a different university, far from here, I won't state any names, that, that there were two very disgruntled professors who were very much in animosity with each other, and so much so, that when one would leave the lab, the other one would go into the lab, take their chemicals and pour them down the sink. And, which is, you know, you don't do that kind of thing, it's not professional. And I remember, as a newer faculty member, realizing that this was a very unusual situation, and stepping in, and talking to them, and saying, there's got to be a way to, a better way to do this. And so we ended up separating them out, and using different, different labs, and then realizing that they can actually respect each other and move forward. There are many examples, but that's one, from an academic standing.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
Well, we each come with our own experiences. As for me, my experiences in, for example, in writing, grant writing, being able to secure funds when necessary to obtain funds from elsewhere. I'm an analyst, I'm a researcher, with my background in casual offer trained, I'm able to take a look at things and dissect them, as I do in my, my novel job at the university as a scientist, as a researcher. And I, I think that can be helpful when you're looking through documents. And also wanted to communicate clearly about issues, both to the people in the council, as well as to the public. And to be able to take fairly, sometimes complicated information, and then break that down in a, in a reasonable manner, so that other people understand.
Thank you. Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation and outcome?
You know, with listening skills, I think you have many students and people that I've worked with over the years, and sometimes, when we look at other people, we assume that they are comprehending the same things that we are. And then, when you ask them, they, they are looking at the world from a different perspective. So, I remember working with, asking, it was actually with the Uh, so I remember working with, asking, uh, it was actually with the, with the class and, and I was lecturing about something and, and I stopped and I was waiting for questions and no questions came. So I took that on as, as that everyone understood everything. In truth, I wasn't really listening to what they weren't saying. It turns out that they weren't able to formulate a question because they were so lost. Uh, and so what I found is that I had to listen to them better, uh, and to understand that, to break down lectures to a point in this particular class that was understandable. And so the outcome was, is that I ended up having to change. Had to be nimble on my, on my feet, my mind. And it was, it was embarrassing as well to realize that I have a host of, of, of people in front of me and I'm, and I'm supposed to be an expert in this area. And yet something, somehow something was lost in there in that communication. And so they taught me in that point and, and you're listening, I basically said, okay, what's, what's the last thing you remember? Where can we go back to the point that you actually remembered something? Let's talk about that. And then put away the PowerPoint, put away the computer, went up to the chalkboard and began just to draw it out and map it out as you would map things out and how our brains think, the different topics, right? Put lines in between. And, and then we found out where they were. I listened to them and we moved forward. So the outcome was, uh, that there was a greater appreciation, me for them and them for me, and students did well in that class and that particular case, yeah.
Ah, the lesson of digestible chunks. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
My ethics? Well, uh, I can, I can tell of one that was a very long time ago. I was, I was in school and it would have been in my, in one of the earlier grades. So this is one from a long time ago. So maybe when we were first beginning to write in word books and I was, my mind was elsewhere. And sometimes it can happen in a long meeting where you just, you're not paying attention, right? And then all of a sudden you realize something's going on. You know that the person next to you knows what's going on. So remember that the person in front of me, another student, seemed to know exactly what was going on. So I thought, since I didn't listen to the teacher at that time, that I would simply copy the person in front of me. So I copied everything on her page and put it on my page and then I handed it in. This was a very good learning experience for me because the teacher came back to me and said, is this your work? And I said, yes, it is. And she said, is this your name? I copied everything, including her name. So I remember that often and I assure you that sometimes, um, it's a reminder that, that it's important that you and people respect and obviously uphold your ethics, so.
How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example.
I cooperate with others often in what I do, um, uh, as well as, you know, usually I would formulate something in my own mind and then wait, we'd work as in you would then, you'd state that information to someone else. For example, uh, when I'm not ever doing research in aquatics, uh, looking at people lake or something and analyzing samples, uh, about a year ago, I started teaching swimming lessons, both at the Y M C A as well as at the local pool here, just because it was something so different than what I normally do. And for those to work well, and we were talking about it earlier in here about swimming lessons and how that money can be brought in, um, it takes cooperation with everyone, right? And if you're not cooperating as a team of instructors and if you have a series of fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders in there working, it's not going to work. Um, so there was a case where, where we had individual people, including myself, um, sort of doing their own thing, right? But it's confusing to the students. There need to be a constant overall instructor way message to put forward so that they, they knew that they were getting a constant message across that group. And so, uh, uh, my independent thought of working with them was really trumped in a good way, that we needed to work together. So we combined minds, talked to others, and it was interesting because I was much, much older than, than the other swimming instructors in that case. Uh, many of them were high school students. Uh, and then, and then, but all equally skilled within the water setting and, and to say, okay, um, you're going to take care of these students, I'm going to take care of these students, let's work together collaboratively. So in that case, independent thinking is very helpful, but you can't, you can't forget that you're going to have to cooperate with others to make it successful overall.
How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees or other governing boards?
Other governmental boards?
Other governing boards.
Governing boards, yeah. Um, yeah, I, I have a lot of the, the committees and, and, and such that I've been, I had experience on, still do it today, would be through different universities or through the outreach of those universities. So be it at Penn State University or University of Central Arkansas, University Commonwealth Kentucky system, or most currently at University of Minnesota, Crookston. Been on, on various committees across sometimes, across the different campuses. They can be hiring committees, excuse me, um, you know, looking for new talent. There could be in some cases, special committees that would be trying to determine, uh, how to figure out discrepancies in different salaries and where's the pot of monies that are set aside and how those monies should be best spread across to, to cover the differential in salaries, for example, at a university. There are different examples outside university that, that I've, I've had experiences with. For example, uh, the animal shelter board in Kentucky, uh, where we lived for, where we lived for eight years. In that case, we worked closely with the animal shelter. Uh, one of the challenges there ends up was that they were putting down 350 animals a month. And for me, growing up in the, in the Midwest, I, 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 I had trouble understanding why there was such a great number of animals being put down, uh, per month. So we were, so part of my experience in that particular board was working with local veterinarians and then helping to raise monies to, to pay those veterinarians, to, uh, to, to help them to, to, uh, cover costs of neutering and then find ways to, to have, find homes for those animals so they wouldn't be put down automatically. So as an example.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
Well, I think the key to success with public is, is, is the people in this, in this council, um, are here because they're elected. You represent the public. And even in this case, I, whoever comes into this position at large, it's open because of vacancy, because Tim Monard resigned. Uh, eventually that would turn into a vote, should that person continue later on. And it's important to make sure that, that you adequately represent your ward or the city at large and you listen to those constituents, those people within those areas. And I think if that is lost, uh, then that becomes, uh, an issue. So I think it's, it's listening, uh, to the public, listening to those people that you represent and bringing forth those concerns to this body. And also the other part of it, I think, is, is taking, as I was talking about before, taking information and explaining it because how this works, this informational system, is you receive information that the general public may not understand or not be privy to. So it's the responsibility of this body then to take that, disseminate it appropriately so that they understand, so that those people who elect the people on this, in this body, they're part of the process. So it's, to me, it's a transparent process for it to work effectively, to be honest. And it's probably a lot easier to sleep at night too, when it's done that way.
Thank you. What do you feel the city of Crookston's top, are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
You know, Crookston is doing a lot of things right. Uh, it's, it's, it has some of the amenities that we need. I know that's not your question, but I'm going to get into that. We have some of the things that would be expected. We have the local, uh, we have, we have, you know, public school system. We have River View for healthcare. We have, we have our, our city and our storefronts. And yet, given all that and the kindness, you know, and, and the businesses that are doing, are being very successful here, and being a little block realty, you know, Be, Be or Myers and chiropractic, and there's some wonderful things that are going on. And yet, if you look at anything, you can always improve, right? So it's, it's moving forward while, while still maintaining what you have, the positive things that you have. And, and for example, if you take a look at the master plan that was updated in 2023 when it was reviewed, one of the things that was stated in there was that a reminder, you know, and all you know this, is that the population is decreasing, right? Which is really strange when you think about it, because this really is a beacon city. Uh, southerners would be realizing this as enhanced global warming continues, uh, that places like this are, are really a godsend, uh, because you have abundant resources, we have abundant soil, clean, lots of nutrients, uh, we have, we have water, we have space, we're nestled in this agriculture community, uh, and, and yet we're not known very well sometimes. So, so one issue is to try to combat the lowering of, of the population size and to grow it in an effective manner and to build the infrastructure needed as other people come here over the next 10, 20, 30 years. So if you look at the numbers, uh, between, what is it, in the 2010s, we lost what, at least 4% and then 2000, 2010, we lost, I think, what, 5.7% of population? So it's an interesting scale when you, when you, when you take a look at the trend line to continue and it gets lower and lower. And I think that's an issue. Uh, another one is, is, uh, you know, it relates personally, uh, when I came here, uh, housing is an issue, that's, that's another topic. When I came here, we couldn't find a house. I live, so I lived for two years in the dormitory at University of Minnesota. Let me tell you, try to explain, try to explain to your wife and daughter that now may not the time, may, may not be the time to come to the city yet because we don't have a house yet. And, and, and you know, I don't mind going back to remind myself what it was like to be in the dormitory, but it was a little bit unusual. And I, and I think somehow to work out, to do planning, to help families to grow, because people want to come to the area where they know they're, and they were talking about this earlier, and they mean affordable housing, you know, where they're going to be, why are they avoiding some areas? And that's incredibly important. Another thing would be storefronts. Uh, we have some hustling, bustling businesses and yet if you drive down the areas, I, I think, uh, they need some assistance. Uh, there are some areas that are, uh, that are not used very well. I, I can think of one example. Every, every time I drive, I can't remember what's main road that is, there's, there's a gas station that has a sign, and they haven't served gas for, since I've been here, kind of, 11 years ago. And there's a sign in there, it says $125,000 and it's very faded out, right? And then crossed out, it says $99,000 below that or above that, which is even hard to read because it's so old. So, so those sorts of areas, I think, could be reutilized. So it's revitalization is a key issue. And I would say that one of the, uh, trying to get people to stay here longer, to say that this is really a good place to be and how do you do that? And, and there are several solutions to that. And I think also building bridges across, across, for example, again, I'm somewhat biased because I, I work at the university, but I also see that there's a great need for students to do internships and they're looking, you know, uh, they need to have internships for almost all the programs before they can graduate. You know, you will not graduate unless you have this internship. And then I take a look at the families running the businesses downtown, many of them need great talents. So if we can create a better bridge across that, so that there, we have two wins. And then many times, when, when you have a positive internship experience, that turns into a job at the end. And then therefore then they stay, they have a family, then they, you know, then they be part of this community that we want to build in a very positive way. So there are some solutions to these. So I, 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 I think it's difficult to always hear issues without solutions as well. So those are some of the main issues that I can think of at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all the questions that we have for you. Do you have any questions for any of us?
No, I just thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
I have one question to ask.
You can't.
We have to ask all of the, all of the candidates the same questions.
Oh. Sorry, Doc. Good seeing you. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. You can either stand or you can sit, whatever you're most comfortable with.
I think I'll stand.
Okay, thank you for being here. Thanks for applying.
Hi, my name is Jeff. I'm the city administrator. Uh, I'll be reading the questions. The council members will be jotting down notes as we progress through. First question is, can you tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position?
Um, I'm interested in a position of change. Um, my focus on change would be the youth and, uh, young teens, emancipated adults. My focus is that. Um, it's just seeing something that's out of reach for where I'm from and where I'm at in life. That's why I'm here, for change.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Uh, I understand the buyer system.
Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
just humble yourself. I understand there's more than one way to get to what you're trying to be. That's about it.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
A different perspective. I know that I will, it may not be seen in this environment.
Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation and the outcome?
Listening skills, um, paying attention. I, one thing that comes to mind, there was somebody that had an off conversation, he said, don't ask questions. You know, and I was having thoughts at that time and the very next day I asked somebody that question twice and it didn't work out. Why?
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
Speaking of in a situation where you know you should have, but you held off a little too, a little longer than you should have.
How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? And share an example.
I understand the concept of timing forward thinking.
How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees or other governing boards? What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
I understand their position. Eye contact.
What do you feel are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
Um, I think top priorities is to create something to bring in a younger demographic of people for, uh, not just to come visit, but to residents. for, not just to come visit, but to residents. I haven't been in this area very long, but smaller communities seem to have smaller community outreach programs. Community outreach and social outreach is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Those are the questions that we have prepared for the position. I'd like to thank you very much for your time and invite you to ask if you have any questions for any of us.
I just like to, so yeah, I appreciate your time having me come in here. I just want to say that. That's it, I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm gonna go ahead and take a seat.
Sure.
No problem, no worries.
So with my application, I guess I submitted a letter.
Yes, the, the council has been provided.
Did anybody have a chance to read it? I'd like to read it, if at all appropriate. Is there a certain way we start this? Or you guys won't?
Well, if you, if you wanna read, go ahead.
Okay.
Before we start the questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Um, so. The two questions that we were kind of asked upon the application or the interest form was, "Explain why you're interested in serving the community of Crookston." And the council, "Describe any prior current experiences that may relate to serving on the city council, such as areas of planning, community involvement, organized strategic planning, policy development, programming, collaborative decision-making, and public finance." Attach an additional page if necessary. So I kind of just broadly spoke to the public in my letter, as well as council folk that are considering me, obviously. As a council, I feel you guys aren't just considering me on your behalf, but as the public's behalf. So that's why I kind of address more or less a broader spectrum here. My understanding of wanting to be part of my community started very early in life for me. As a young child, I was taught the values of a strong community through programs like Head Start, the Sunrise Center, and our local cathedral, as well as attending our saviors at an early age. I don't bring that up, not to identify a separation of church and state, but to identify a local grounds of where I'm from and being a part of multiple organizations here locally from my youth. In my youth longevity, respect, and heritage have always played a key role in my development as a member, not only of my own family, but of my community. I grew up with the understanding that my great-great-grandfather, Baron Hagan, was one of Polk County's first proclamated settlers north of East Grand Forks in Polk County. That being said, that is north of Highway Two. And his son, my great-great-grandfather, was an active member in the local community. These being early topics for myself, it was easy to see the importance of being an active role in government. Other examples set forth for me in the areas of public are the examples set before in entrepreneurship and human resources and management of allocation. Now, I am a local entrepreneur. I also consider myself to be somewhat of a local philanthropist. I've come back to the community after being away, and I would like to grow the community the best I can while I'm here. That being said, I like to have reasons to stay. But this also being said, now going forth into the latter of the letter, my early education was part of several community involvement, team-building environments, from middle school volleyball management for a girls' team, and understanding co-ed relationships, interrole programs like Clubs of DECA, 4-H Sports, Student City Council. Moving past early years of youth, being a professional certified food manager, I had relocated to larger cities like Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I'm familiar with the demographics of large environments and what that looks like as far as creating new ideas for cities. I've taken a lot of that in just growing up in a local, larger cityscape like Grand Forks, but surpassing that in cityscapes like Fargo and Sioux Falls. I had relocated to other larger cities in the past, and I apprenticed to be a goldsmith, as well as worked in Fargo in jewelry and other professional careers in fine jewelry. Moving back home in two thousand seventeen, I worked for some local outlets around the area, opening Crookston's local jewelry store, The Jeweler. I have always carried plans and initiated help to create and provide for my local community, as well as being available to serve the public in whatever our local areas might need. I believe this is based, I believe this is my base interest in the position of city council, holding a non-self-serving agenda while serving the public and hypercritical to local and small government, which is most susceptible to types of personal capital fulfillment or local treason against the greater good. I believe in working for the public in the public's best interest while upholding the fundamentals of our local government and community. And that is kind of my background knowledge and what I feel a city council member should look like. Now, as far as more of a layman's terms for myself, I feel it's important to develop the area not only through the city, but through all local resources that are available. And so, being a city council member, I feel I would bring in insight on how to maybe do that.
Alright, thank you.
With council consensus, I believe Bishop has answered question number one.
I mean, I think we just ask it, ask it and see if he has anything else to add.
Tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position? Is there anything else you would like to add to?
My name is Bishop Jensen. That's who I am essentially locally, Bishop Morales Jensen. I actually carry both of my family names. And both of my families are from here. So I feel like my interest here is for the stability of the local environment. It has nothing to do with self-serving agendas or, or trying to push one way or the other. It has to do with the community as a whole and its survival.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Communication, as well as storm building. And with communication also comes oversight and hearing. I think it's critical to listen and understand what's being presented to you in order for you to make a sound decision.
Thank you. Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or your employer.
Um, I guess we can go to that on a greater community standard of, I'm an entrepreneur here locally. I did open the local jewelry store about fifteen months ago. And I've gotten the honor and the privilege to work with the majority of the community on a firsthand basis. And yes, with their jewelry needs, but as well as other community needs and concerns, people often will seek out those of us in a position of understanding when it comes to finance or money, to have insight on what that might look like or what those might entail as far as benefits.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
One particular thing I think I could bring to the city council as a general is fresh eyes. Broader scape of eyes as far as the environments that I have lived in and understanding what that looks like as far as potential goes for storm building, ideas, creativities, alternative outlooks or outlets.
Thank you. Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation and the outcome?
I really do enjoy listening to not only these meetings here when they're aired and televised online, and then refraining from making any kind of public statement. A lot of times, we wanna run to the hills and, and say what we're thinking, and that isn't always necessary. And that isn't always appropriate. And so I feel like my best example could be even just listening to council meetings and knowing when and when not to speak.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
My ethics are tested in my industry every day. I work with people's precious heirlooms, and I work with extremely expensive materials. So that being said, I have a natural transparency to me when it comes to money and when it comes to goods and the exchange of goods. I was trained in by some of the leading markets in the industry, Halsberg Diamonds and Berkshire and Hathaway Corporation, being one of them, hiring me twice in my lifetime. I was a sought-after salesperson in the industry, and it's allowed me to open Crookston's outlet here. So that being said, I think I can provide lots of transparency that way.
Thank you.
And ethics.
How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example.
Well, a lot of independent thinking doesn't have a place in public settings. Independent thinking is something that you do personally when you contemplate by yourself. Independent thought in a group format isn't always team-oriented. And so to develop independent thoughts in a team-oriented facet almost seems contradictory. You wanna keep in mind what the team has already developed, and you wanna continue to try and create and hone in on those ideas, as well as contribute your own, but hear everybody else's.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
I do not have a lot of experience with that directly, and I will openly acknowledge and admit that. I look forward to any opportunity that I've been given. I've sought out some in adulthood, was not needed or was not necessary. I've been sought out in other forms of committees in adulthood that I took no interest in, so I respectfully did not take those roles on.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
Reiterating the plan. The reiteration of the plan and upholding that plan is critical to the public. That is what they want from their city officials, is to not only know that they're developing a plan, but that they know what plan they have developed and that they can reiterate it. And I feel that that would be a great benefit in me here, able to reiterate the plans that are being discussed.
Thank you. The final question we have. What do you feel are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
Top three priorities for Crookston is Crookston Development. And that's not just one specific department. I would say that's a blanket comment for Crookston needs to continue to develop, to grow. In housing and in businesses alike, as well as in economic times of turmoil, we need to diversify our ways of growth. That would be my number one, is development. Crookston needs to, to develop and constantly seek out development. But two is also making sure that Crookston is an adequate state for people to develop in. So that would be my second one, is securing or seeing the value in development processes. That's not just development itself, but that's securing development, which is a whole separate category in my mind, as far as a priority goes. And the third priority, I feel, for Crookston could easily and simply be policy. Policy in Crookston here is, is kind of changed a lot and in some ways hasn't changed enough. I feel like policy should be one of the first and foremost practices for the city of Crookston, is, is addressing old policies, addressing new policies, and, and refinement of policies. So the three answers to your question are development, the development of development or securing development, and as well as policy creation and control.
Thank you. As mentioned, that, that does conclude our questions. Thank you very much for your time and your interest. And if you had, now would be the appropriate time if you have any questions for any of the board.
I don't believe I have any questions for the board, unless anybody has any individual questions or.
Unfortunately, we are limited to asking the same questions to all candidates.
I would like to close on that. I appreciated your guys' meeting tonight, and I felt that you guys came a long ways in the topics that were brought forth to the council. And so I look to savor the good side of things that come through the council. And I hope that anybody who's placed in this seat will do the same.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll take a minute.
Hello.
Hello.
You can either stand or sit on, whatever you're most comfortable with. Clay needs a minute to stretch, he's old.
It's okay.
I'm old too, so.
Go ahead, stretch.
This might get awkward, because I'm the one asking questions in your behind the most.
A little better.
Keenan, did the microphones pick up the creaky knees and?
Please, oh, sir.
Excellent. I've reached that point where when I move, I snap, crackle, and pop. Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for applying for the position. We do have a series of questions. I have been nominated to read the questions. The board will be taking notes and describing on them. First question, tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position?
My name's Wendy. And I'm interested in this spot because I feel like there's a lot of work left to do and I would like to sit here and help everyone do it. I sat here for a little while, as you know, before, and I am passionate about helping our city and making good decisions. So I just want to make some changes for the better.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
Well, I think you have to have a lot of communication. And I think you have to have a good level of respect and common courtesy. I think it goes a long way to treat each other well.
Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
So as most of you know, I've been in human resources for over fourteen years now, almost fifteen. So building relationships and maintaining those relationships is part of my daily work. And if it wasn't for me doing that every day, I think any of the businesses that I've worked for probably wouldn't be as successful as they are. So whether it's helping employees through difficult situations or communicating with other, other entities to, to assist our businesses in various ways, it's just a part of it.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Crookston City Council?
I think I had this answer last time. I'm pretty much smiling all the time, right? Pretty easy to get along with. And I think those of you who've worked with me before know that I'm pretty level-headed. I can make conscious decisions without having to. I can think about things and make decisions easily.
Thank you. Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation and outcome?
I could probably give you a lot of examples of that. Again, it's kind of my daily life with what I do for a living. But also here as well, you know, sitting for those six months on city council, you have to. But also here as well, you know, sitting for those six months on City Council, you have to have really good listening skills. You know, specifically when we worked through all of the budget constraints and all of the pool stuff that was so difficult to navigate during that time, listening to our constituents and each other and Jeff talked about all the budget stuff. Definitely demonstrate some listening skills there. Employees everywhere and any of our managers as well in the business, so.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
I, you know, I think when you're in human resources, you have to be pretty ethical in everything that you do. But there are times that people kind of want to push the limits, whether it's a coworker that you have a good relationship with wants you to look the other way while they maybe do something they shouldn't or, you know, a manager wants to, you know, kind of like violate a policy and have you look the other way, that kind of thing. And so that has, I've definitely had experiences like that where, you know, somebody you work closely with has violated a policy and expects you to look the other way because you have a close working relationship. But when you are operating with integrity, you have to draw that line.
Thank you. How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example.
You have to do that every day, I think, in everything that you do. You have a backbone and stand up for what you think is right. It's okay to disagree with the people that you're sitting with or that you're working with. But at the end of the day, once you make a decision, then you just, you have to commit to it and move forward. It's hard. Not everybody is always going to be in a hundred percent agreement with things, but you just have a backbone and commit. You can have those conversations in a healthy, mature, respectful way.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
So I sat on a board of directors as a co-chair for just about two years for a childcare center. I'm currently sitting on the Cheetah Board and I also sat here for about six months.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
You have to be as transparent as you possibly can, keeping in mind some information is is not ready to be shared.
The last question we have is, what do you feel are the City of Croxton's top three priorities?
Housing, childcare, and housing, I could elaborate on that a whole lot. And childcare, I could elaborate a whole lot on that as well, but we all know what housing and childcare means. The third one is kind of tough. I would love to say growing some businesses is hard. I think we need to attract, we need to attract something here, whether that's manufacturing or retail. I'm not really, not a hundred percent sure, but definitely we need some growth.
Well, thank you very much for your time. That does conclude the questions that we have. Now would be the time that you would have available to ask any questions you may have for the board.
I have zero questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy.
You can either stand or sit, your choice.
Yeah, wait.
We have one member absent from the committee and we'll wait. It'd just be a moment. Welcome. Thank you for your interested in vacancy. As you may know, my name is Jeff, the city administrator, before as for the remaining council members that I know you're familiar with. We have ten questions. I will be asking, the council will be drafting their notes in the process. First question is, tell us about yourself and why are you interested in this position?
My name's Nat Rosu. I've lived in Croxton, just like four years now. Our house on Two Hundred Golf Terrace is our first home purchase that we've ever had. I chose Croxton. This town, it's the smallest town I've ever lived in. I've lived in Portland, metro area, Oregon, Salt Lake Valley, West Jordan. Be a part of the city council because be an active member of government. When things are going in a way that I don't agree with or make change, we are the government. If we want things to change, we need to participate. Strong believer in that. I've always voted every election that I've been from two thousand eight when I became old enough to be president. Now that I've settled down, my roots here in Croxton, I want to be an active member of the community and community in ways that I think would benefit for prosperity.
Thank you. In your experience, what is the key to developing a good team?
In my experience, developing a good team is to make connections with people. You have to make those connections in order to learn the strengths and eventually you'll learn weaknesses of teammates that you have. Sometimes, for instance, I'm good at training people, I think. When I worked at the Ag Innovation Campus, part of the team that put together the SOPs for operating shutdown, operating the heavy machinery that we do, to individuals on different shifts and stuff and asked them if they had any input. Because you have to realize that I don't believe one single person has the answer. I'm never going to pretend that I know more than anyone else because I don't. And building a strong team is knowing how to draw on other people's strengths and helping them with their weaknesses.
Thank you. Describe an experience in which your ability to work well with others and reconcile differences helped your company or employer.
I worked at a place in Utah called Alternate Products Spink. I was part of the safety committee for a few years before I left and moved over here. When we first joined the safety committee, we didn't have high participation in our safety, we had these little sheets that you'd have to do safety alerts. Basically, things that you see in your manufacturing area, we produce toothpaste, as an example, Sensodyne Kids Aqua Fresh, for instance. And we had almost no input from the formulation department that we worked in. We had this big manufacturing area. We had sorbitol and VG chemicals and no one would write up parts because they didn't see any benefit. They would have a safety suggestion like, oh, this hose needs to be tightened because it leaks or this coupling needs to be fixed because it moves when the steam goes into the jacket. Was able to join that safety committee and basically show people that by inputting the ideas, see action. And so I would go and try to upper management and show them, hey, these guys are starting the right things. Let's show them that you guys are listening and actually caring about what they're doing.
Thank you. What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Croxton City Council?
Can you repeat that, please?
What unique characteristic do you think you could bring to the Croxton City Council?
I have a unique family. It's me and my wife and my three boys here in Croxton. All my boys, Richard, John, and Brandon, they all were born with autism spectrum disorder.
So they're all diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder?
All three of them. To have children and when you have children, you kind of expect things to go. Then, in my case, to have my kids and then see that things aren't the way I had seen things previously before I had kids. Life hasn't gone the way that I thought it would. And I think that you have to be able to adapt. You have to keep pushing. You have to keep coming up with ways to still have a happy family difficulties that we have. And I think in that way, I've been able to adapt
to the life vision that I saw previously. Like, for instance, I used to love camping.
I used to be a boy scout. I didn't get very far. It was a life, I think.
I would go camping almost every weekend when I was a young man, in my teenage years.
I haven't gone camping once since becoming a father.
Some of my kids are runners. One time, my oldest and my middle, John and Richard, ran away in the middle of the night, early in the morning. So I see things in a different way, different light. I think this city is a wonderful place to live. And I think it can be better for all, whether you're disabled or not. And I think we need to do a better job as a city. So I think my perspective is different and I think it's unique in that way and being able to adapt to whatever's thrown at me. Thank you. Provide an example of a time when you were able to demonstrate excellent listening skills. What was the situation and the outcome?
Back to my experience at AIC or Ag Innovation Campus. I am not a mechanic by any stretch of the imagination. But I had people at AIC who were mechanics, who had a history in mechanics and being able to build and take apart machinery and picture it in their minds, kind of like a computer schematic. And I learned so much from the specific person at AIC, Cole Ricardo. Taught me a lot about how to take presses apart, take legs apart, and take drags apart. I would listen to him to formulate how to start equipment. Because just sitting in the control room, you have access to the whole computer system and you think you know how it's going to operate, but listening to the people who know how each part by itself works and then all together. Have to be able to listen to those who know more than you in order to formulate a more smooth operation. And like writing the SOPs, you know, okay, five seconds after the extruder starts, then we need to start the feeder and then from the feeder that needs to activate the forcer and that forcer from this feeder and so on and so forth. So being able to speak to people with their expertise to be able to formulate a better SOP, for instance, standard operating procedure.
Thank you. Provide an example when your ethics were tested.
I believe in doing what's right, even almost to a fault, being honest to a fault. I'll give you an example of that, for instance. The house that I bought, Two Hundred Golf Terrace, used to be owned by Paul and Cecilia, the Icove. And for many years after we moved in, we kept receiving mail and packages and various things from the Icoves. One day, we got a particularly large package from the Netherlands, of all places. It was, you know, yay, yay there. And I could have just thrown it in the trash. Waste of time to go down to his street and deliver it to him. So I got in my car that day and I drove down to Icove, Colingaria parked in there because I had never been there and handed Charles the box from the Netherlands. And right then and there, he asked me if I worked for him. I had worked at this before, previously, when I first moved up here. And I I felt like that was like a reward, being honest, instead of just throwing mail away of theirs or. And the whole time I worked there, gave Paul all his mail and stuff. But I truly believe that honesty is doing what's right when people aren't looking. You know, filling in time sheets properly, acting as you would at all times, being yourself at all times around anyone. I think that translates into how you treat people. I should be the same person here as I am at home, as I am at work, at school bus, driving the kids to and from school. It is easier to not be honest in today's world, but I truly believe that integrity at all times.
Thank you. Thank you. How do you balance cooperation with others and independent thinking? Share an example.
I think it goes back to collaborating with folks. I don't believe that anyone personally has all the idea, all the ideas in the world. Sometimes it's nice to be able to bounce ideas off of folks and then build upon that. For instance, coming up with ideas on how to save the Crookston Community Pool, for instance. I think a lot of times coming to these meetings, it's like, I think I have an idea of what I want. But then hearing your guys' discussion, it's like, that makes a lot of sense. So I think being able to have your own idea, but then being strong enough to be able to change your opinion or your view based on other evidence or discussion. But I think that's the closest to that question that I can get.
Thank you. How much experience do you have serving on boards of directors, management committees, or other governing boards?
As you can probably see on my application, it's empty. I have not been on government boards. The closest to a government board that I've been on is the Safety Committee at Alternate, and I served that time for about two and a half years. And that would be different departments with volunteers, and it wasn't paid extra or anything. Running the safety, uh, Safety Committee Plan in that department, and then bringing all the safety alerts up. You know, then top management would decide, you know, what's the priority for the next month or so.
Thank you.
However, I do think that could be a strength. I have been a part of caucus committees. I was a caucus chair in Salt Lake Valley during the primary season in fifteen, fifteen, yeah, fifteen, sixteen years, two thousand fifteen and sixteen. I caucus back even before then for Menarami in twenty twelve. I have been to protests and other things like that throughout the years. And I've participated in various, as you guys know, various city council meetings as well.
Thank you. What is the key to success when communicating with the public?
Keys to success is just communicating. Talking, putting yourself out there, in my opinion.
Thank you.
I, sorry, I
Go ahead.
I've just kind of formulated ideas in my mind. It is hard, as you guys know, because I was there and you were here, and but that's kind of, we're all public servants here, including myself, as being a on the school district employee. Each of those kids, saying good morning and have a good, great day, you know, it's just a very small thing. But it's communicating, it's positivity, it's, it's maybe making their day better, I don't know. Communicating, 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 making connections. I love the work that the Facebook team has done last year or so. I think it's been stellar. I think the city's doing great in that regard. And I think the more that the public knows, they'll be involved, I love that there's eight people here instead of three, like when we Goodness. See. I think the more you communicate, where you put yourself out there, the more the public will get involved, the better our community will be.
Thank you. Our final question, what do you believe are the city of Crookston's top three priorities?
Top three priorities for Crookston, I believe. Growing our tax base. Growing housing. Businesses here in town. I have heard you guys talk about it, I love it. I love this news report that I've read a few weeks ago about a new housing development going in. I love that. We need to bring people here. Need to bring businesses here, and it's kind of like, we're in this position right now where we have people leaving, and so businesses are leaving, and it's like a vicious cycle, we have to break it. And it's really hard to break it. As, as we've witnessed over the last twenty years, or ten years, or however long the population's been dropping, fifty years, whatever. And I believe that as a city council member, I would go out and cheerlead for this town. I chose Crookston, I chose to live here. I never bought a house before, and I don't really I don't know if I'll ever be able to afford to buy a new house. I don't come for money, I'm not saying anyone else's or anything, but I'm just kind of out here by myself, I have my sister up in Alvarado, my parents are still in Portland. But I feel like be cheerleading for this town, and I don't mean literally out there with pom poms, but selling this town to businesses or companies, this is a great place. Data centers, that's an opportunity. There's tons of data centers, the NSA data center, the biggest one, is in Utah, the desert, where there's barely, there's hardly any water, the Great Salt Lake is shrinking down, but they have data centers all over that desert, where they have to cool it year round. Because of the climate, our climate is freezing cold like half of the year. I mean, I think there are opportunities if we think outside the box. And I just think growth is, could be the three top priorities. We have to think differently. There are pine communities all over this country where they take a parcel of land and you have it developed. If I could encourage you all to look into the Daybreak Project in Utah, in South Shore, Utah. There's just a lot of opportunities where we can grow this town and stop this vicious cycle that we find ourselves in, that we all do. Because then the city loses money, the school district loses money, and it's this poor position we found ourselves in.
Thank you. That does conclude the questions we have, that we have prepared. Thank you very much for your time and your interest, and it now would be any time if you have any questions for the board.
I don't know if it's a question, more of a statement, or not a statement. I'm very appreciative. I gave you guys a lot of heat during discussions about the pool. And I hope none of you took it personal. I'm just very passionate about the things in my life that I am passionate about. So you saw when it came to my kids, it's they're my legacy. Just want them to live in a great town, I have so many fond memories. Pool in Forest Grove, Oregon, that I'd go to every Saturday. And Forest Grove is kind of a lot like Crookston, it has a university. Just like we do, and I just think we have a lot of opportunity here. So I appreciate all of you allowing me to come here and speak with you for the opportunity.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we just
Let's just do this.
Wait, instead of vocal, do you want to put it on a piece of paper?
Not here. Either way. However.
We can follow whatever process we'd like for expediency, if each member, if council agrees, if each member would like to write their top two choices.
I thought I just did one.
We're doing one, yep, we're doing one, yep.
Each council member write their top choice and pass it to Ashley, and Ashley can calculate.
Alright, you got paper, we just didn't we weren't gonna vocalize it, I thought we were just gonna
Anybody who's taken a fast down of several sheets?
You got those, it's here.
Just waiting on your done. Alright, so we have a three-way tie. So our top three are Gina, Joseph, and Wendy. So if you want to go ahead and
Are we just voting one more time?
Yes, we're just voting one more time for your
Top three.
Top three.
And Gina, Joseph, and Wendy would be the only places available?
So we vote for the top three.
Yes.
We're here.
So I'm gonna take this, I'm gonna take this.
We'll take that one, put it in the fire and let the black smoke go.
No, I'm really not into this because everything is public.
Here.
Is this the new one? So this was not a good thing because they're the same? No, because there's one extra one.
Because we got extra somewhere.
Yeah, so can I just give everybody, can I have a sheet of paper so we have a, because like I said, this multiple one is not allowed. So then everybody can have off of here.
That way we can match the pairs.
I apologize, I was not prepared for it to be wrote down. Have paper? So again, that is for
Joseph, Gina, and Wendy, right?
Wendy, Gina, or Joseph?
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
There's one, two.
Alright, so we have one with three, and that is Joseph, so. He had, I told all the candidates that they could wait at home, so I will be calling them and letting them know, so. Again, again, this is a consensus, so it still has to move forward to the next city council meeting, so normally how it works is we have a special council meeting to appoint, and then once that has been approved, then we will have this married and the oath of office at the next council meeting on June second. So. Anything else?
I'd just like to thank everybody for their time, that the effort to submit their names and run for council at large. Now, it's not an easy decision to do. And I think it's a positive thing, though, because we've had more people interested in city government this round than we did last time.
Or had the election, did that matter?
So, thank you again.
Combined.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
We are adjourned, thank you.